Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome all of you to the Town of Mooresville Board of Commissioners, December 5th, 2022 Board Meeting. At the first meeting of each month, we do set aside some time to allow public comment for our citizens or anyone wanting to address the Board. Each speaker is given three minutes in which to comment. Speakers are expected to be civil and respectful to the Board in their language and presentation. It is the Board's practice not to respond or engage in conversations with anyone who speaks in order to give the speaker the full amount of time to voice their concerns. If you raise a matter you would like addressed by either the Board or by the town staff, please leave your name and contact information with the town clerk and someone will contact you. Please understand that state law prohibits us from discussing employee personnel matters with you. So friends, we do have four people that have signed up for public comment. Each person will be given three minutes. There is a timer there that you'll be able to see that. I'd like to invite Gary Carr up first to the podium to provide his public comment.
Mr. Mayor, Town Commissioners, members of Mooresville community. By way of introduction, my name is Gary Carr. I'm a new citizen of Mooresville, having been a longtime resident of Alexandria, Virginia, and a native of Cincinnati, Ohio. The issue I'd like to address today or to bring to your attention is local television, local cable television public access facility or the lack thereof. It is my understanding that by statute, contract, and as a public service, cable companies are required to provide the local community with access to the airways. Due to the many changes in the cable industry, the town of Mooresville has been left without a local public access facility. This is not a public television, this is public access as is being broadcast here. Public access television in Mooresville consists of two, three stations. One for government access, one for educational access, and one for public access. These channels are directly or indirectly controlled by the Charlotte Mecklenburg Public Access Corporation. However, these channels are for the benefit of the Mooresville-Iredale community. Yet the citizens of Mooresville and Iredale County are prohibited from being programmed producers. Furthermore, they are forced to pay four times the membership fee, not to mention that it's a 50-mile drive to the facility and back. So that's the problem. What would it take to create a public access facility in Mooresville? It would take a location. It would require the cameras, the lighting, and the sound. This cost is dependent on governmental interactions, donations, and repurposing current equipment. And it would probably take an employer or two to keep this thing going. Part of this cost could be defrayed by memberships, grants, and sponsorships. Finally, it might take some legislative or political action to make this facility most beneficial, make sure it meets community standards, and serves the entire area. Your consideration is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to call Patrick Wright forward.
Patrick Wright, 113 Gable Road, Mooresville. Good evening, Mayor Atkins, Commissioners, town staff, and Mooresville citizens. My wife and I have yet to be residents of the community for an entire year, but we have had an overwhelming sense of appreciation and gratitude to this Board, to the residents of Mooresville, and all the others that seem to make things happen. We see an enormous amount of pride and a sense of community exhibited everywhere we go. Being from Southern California, I grew up at the Rose Parade nearly in my backyard. And in my humble opinion, I can tell you that this little town's Christmas parade may not have the glitz and glamour, but it certainly makes up with it with community and grace. The Veterans Parade, Small Business Saturday, Sippin' Shops, Christmas Parade, Breakfast with Santa Claus at the PD, all of these things yet to come during the month of December. It fills me with pride, knowing that we certainly made the right move coming to the town of Mooresville. There's a mix of nostalgia, embracing the future, tending to current needs, and needs to be a daunting task. It's obvious that we have the right people at the right time. Thank you all for your service. I look forward to the last few days of this year and to the celebrations that follow next year. As I read the editorial pages in the local newspapers, there's a never-ending theme of overdevelopment and oppressive traffic, which seems to always be there at the top of the list. And yes, I can see that these are concerns that need to be addressed, but let's all be grateful we don't have the crowded and suffocating environment of a metropolitan suburb. When it comes to traffic and taxes, I can assure you that one day in Southern California is much worse than a year in Mooresville. Let's be proud and grateful for what we have. Your vision, your commitment to the town and residents is ever so obvious. Additionally, I'd like to give a shout out to our town manager for getting the 115 Main Street project rolling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Lori D.
Hi, my name is Lori, and I run Cancer Cluster Army, North Carolina. I work with environmental groups like Susan Wynn's Team Taylor Environmental Grant and the Safe Scientists Group, working with coal ash contamination and the cancer clusters across North Carolina. We have 14 coal ash contaminated coal fire plants in North Carolina. We're spending $20 years and $9 billion to do a partial cleanup of these plants. It's just the active coal ash ponds, not the closed ponds or the sites where they use the coal ash as dirt. Our NCDEQ has run a coal ash reuse program since 1987 where they've been reusing radioactive toxic coal ash as dirt. Mooresville was targeted for coal ash reuse in the 1980s. All along 150, going away from the Marshall plant or sites where coal ash was used as dirt, such as Lowe's Hobby Lobby parking lot where there's half a million tons of coal ash that's gotten into the groundwater, there's the Tire Masters where there's been a coal ash sinkhole sitting open for almost three years now, and it has now left the property and is into the local stream headed to the local neighborhoods. We offered to do, pay for a testing of that coal ash on the property, and were turned down when the Marshall plant went under order of cleanup. 16 million tons that's going to be moved back from Lake Norman and create a mountain over 100 feet tall outside the plant. But it's a forever toxin. There's a boron plume out there that's going to last for 700 years even with treatment. Coal ash is more radioactive than nuclear power plants because of the uranium, radium, and thorium in it. Duke Energy had a home building arm called Crescent Resources that built every million-dollar home on Lake Norman, every golf course, every park, and they were allowed to use coal ash to do it, and they didn't have to keep the records to do it. So now we've got rows and rows of people with cancers and Alzheimer's and birth defects and little kids with ADHD. And I know my time's running out, so I want to show you my son. This is my son Aaron. When he was 24 in 2018, he got testicular cancer. This week is the year that we lost him. He died a month before his 28th birthday. Lake Norman has high rates of testicular cancer that's going completely unrecognized along with the thyroid. The thyroid cancer is from the radiation. I'd also like to touch base on the site that's beside the new police station, that's the credit union where there's 100,000 tons of coal ash, and I was looking at the records, it's actually under the Tudor Town.
Thank you, Lori. Can you make sure the town clerk has your contact information? Thank you. Mr. Beck.
Mr. Mayor, town staff, Board, citizens of Mooresville. Sometimes one is unsure of where to begin as there are many subjects that could be addressed. However, I've chosen to concentrate on some aspects of the items on tonight's agenda concerning rezoning, annexation, and a limited response to the lack of affordable public housing. I acknowledge some actions are underway to address the last item. For the record, as most are well aware, Mooresville is becoming more and more congested by the day as unfettered, almost irresponsible growth is permitted to flourish. As of October month end, there were 18,655 housing units on tap for construction within the Mooresville zoning jurisdiction, of which one-half, 9,324, are multifamily units, for which the last six-month average of multifamily units is 8,913 on the report provided by Planning and Development. Less than a mile from my home, 1,678 units, or 9% of the total units are in various stages of planning or construction. Can you comprehend the number? Let me quote from North Carolina General Statute 160D-107, moratoria. "The authority, as provided in this section, local governments may adopt temporary moratoria on any development approval required by law, except for the purpose of developing and adopting new or amended plans or development regulations governing residential uses. The duration of any moratorium shall be reasonable in light of specific conditions that warrant imposition of the moratorium and may not exceed the period of time necessary to correct, modify, or resolve such conditions." Is not congestion that directly impacts public safety and welfare a specific condition? Many, many times I've spoken before this Board, sent emails, and otherwise communicated with Board members and staff about the unabated rush to further congest Mooresville. Remember this one? Almost 200% since 2019. Number, units going up. For the record, tonight, December 5th, and also via submission of a public comment online, October 31st of 2022, October 7th, 2022, September 19th, 2022, September 6th, 2022, August 1st, 2022, July 5th, 2022. On May 16th, 2022, I did not speak before the Board, but after the meeting was asked by the Chair, why not? My response was that another speaker adequately presented similar views about the issue at hand. April 11th, 22, April 4th, 22, February 7th, 22, December 6th, 21, December 21st, 21, and on and on and on. Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Ladies and gentlemen, with that, the Chair will call the meeting to order, asking you to please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we're thankful for another day here in Mooresville. We're thankful for the many ways you've blessed us. We just give you praise, and we pray, Lord, that tonight's meeting, that you would guide the hearts and tongues of all that are here, that what is said and done would be pleasing to you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, we do have two presentations this evening. The first one is with the Mooresville Police Department. Chief Camper Johnny.
So tonight, we have two people that I had promoted to detective that we'd like to honor. Real brief, because I know there's plenty of things going on tonight. These two individuals, I had been here too long, and I was asked to speak at the LEQ graduation. And these two individuals were in the class. Of course, by that time, had already figured out the free agency market down here, so they were both getting offers from other departments. And I said, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. So we had a conversation in the back room, and we were fortunate enough that both of them took my advice and came to Mooresville. They've both been outstanding, and in a very short time now, they've been promoted to detective and within the last few weeks. Not only that, but in that short time, they've made quite an impact on CID units, so we're just very proud of them. We have some flags that Chief places their direct report, so he's going to read the flags, or both of them individually.
This is Detective Eleanor Aladino. She says she's been with us a few years, she's done a great job, and we're happy to have her in CID. All this flag says, "In recognition of your leadership ability and dedication to support the overhaul, you're hereby trusted with the duties and responsibility of the ranks of detective." That's the next one.
Cool.
Cody, Abby, I'm going to mention his last name. But then with his, for a while too, he just reappeased, got moved up a month ago.
Yes, sir.
Doing regular ground running in CID units, you've been a great addition. It says, "Cody, Abby, recognition of your leadership ability, your leadership ability and dedication to the city of Mooresville, you're hereby trusted with the duties and responsibility of the ranks of detective."
So very briefly, just so we try to cover all the bases here, Cody's a former Marine, for any of you that have been in here, and Ellie is expecting her first child, so congratulations.
Commissioners, we have one additional presentation this evening. This is a retirement recognition, and I'm calling Chief Deaton from Mooresville Fire Rescue.
Wonderful, thank you, Mayor. And it's great to have a great, a big crowd here tonight to see the police and fire department's presentation. So I would like to, I'd like to bring up Eddie Lingerfield, his wife, just to say what I'm stepping up, or just Eddie's brother. But this man right here has served this town for over 24 years, and you know, he has served many roles as firefighter. He is currently a police driver, a senior firefighter on the Little Red Truck. If you don't know, we have a Little Red Truck and a Big Red Truck. We deliver services in different means because we probably get a bit of what the front are giving to us, that's for the ID citizens. But Eddie currently drives the Little Red Truck, he drives it actually a lot of time, and he answers a lot of medical calls and things like that. So he has served this town really well the last 20, 40 years. I am very proud. And one of the honors that I get as a fire chief here is to present this man to you guys as the citizens, and this Board is the job of us. I'm very proud to sit here and shake his hand.
Forty-eight years to be in this league, he's been on fire, not firefighting, he's been in the fire department. This man came along like hell in my toward you, but during that time, he became my friend, and he's a member like that. So I had to say, you've got, spent a lot of time with you, with the church, brief forgiveness, that's his wife's name, the choir. So he's, I'm only a fellow worker, a worker of mine, but he's just a good friend. And he hadn't been with the department very long, and he came to me, he was all that serious little yell at you, he said, "Sir, one day I'm going to have your job." He never quite hit there, but I think he worked, worked out even better for me, because as the Chief said, he was on Squad 1. And the perfect man for Squad 1 is David Kuhn, because his demeanor, his personality, he worked hard, didn't even first respond on the Little Red Truck, before the big Red Truck ever gets there, they ever been in. Before the EMS got there, this man right here was taking care of the patient, right here. And so we're going to miss that. Now, the Squad 1 is still occupied by Jim Ray and David Wilson. I'm sure somebody stepped up to take his place, but they might be the same. This man right here, talking about a first responder, people there, did all this COVID stuff. And I stopped him one day, came by the house, I stopped him to get a bulletproof vest in the back seat, and he said, "What's that?" He said, "Sometimes we have to wear it." So we think about police officers in the line of fire danger, right here, you stand right here, whether fighting fire or responding to an unknown medical emergency, you don't know what you're getting into. And yet, they're right here, we're going to miss this. And I'm bringing you my family.
I've had a few words. Thank you again, sir. Commissioners, we've really done well tonight to bring out a crowd to hear Mr. Heeman's manager's report, so you guys are really in for a treat. Mr. Heeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, members of the audience. Just want to run through some of the things that are going on that may not be otherwise covered tonight. We did have a really good orientation today. You can see we've got a list of all of our new employees. Have the privilege of spending about an hour with them today as they get started in their new positions, and we're very thankful in this tight environment of employment to have these folks join us. We also hired a new technology innovation director, Chris Lee, who joins us starting December the 12th. We're glad to have him onboard. And you heard a few of the promotions already. We also had promotions in the library, some other firefighter promotions. Josh Potte became heavy lead mechanic, and Chris Huntley down there became a crew leader in streets. So glad to see folks moving up within the organization. Great news on Wes Wilson. We got the intersection back in at Low Rance, reopened on November 23rd. Signal was expected to be in January, so then we're missing, I think, one more layer, the final lift, as they say, of asphalt on this road, and that'll be complete. So good work on that project by engineering. If you look at our street department, there next to Santa Claus, we've got the traffic crew. That is Bob Blizzard, who really does play Santa for us. If you don't know him, getting ready to retire as well, one of our great folks in that department. They've been working on American flag installation on Main, they did that for Veterans Day. They hang the wreaths. They do a lot of things that people don't know about, and they do a great job. Street department has been busy with sidewalks on South Academy Street, at the Dog Park, and with the police department, helping them with their move, and the asphalt crew as well, has got some work going on with ADA compliance projects at Magla and Edgemore Parks. Save some money by doing that in-house, and we appreciate their work. Utilities, we have award-winning water. Once again, we won both the Collections Medium System Award and the Distribution Medium System Awards, so good job by Allison and her crew. And they'll be at the annual conference where they'll receive those awards here shortly. We did have an evaluation of our stormwater collection system, review of the inspection reports, the FOG program. Audit report was received, and the town has no deficiencies or violations. You can see the crew there with one of our VAC trucks that we use to clean those out. And to Mr. Wright's comment, there's so much going on, we really wanted to share some of the events that are going on. We did have a really good breakfast with Santa there at MPD, 300 children, enjoyed breakfast from Chick-fil-A, and met Santa, so a great event. And we also had our grand opening of our skate park. As I mentioned before, the largest skate park in the southeast, thanks to our recreation department. And, you know, Mayor Pro Tim Qualz said something at the groundbreaking for this, that it's not about always just the balls and the sticks. We have a lot of skaters that gave input into this park, and it turned out great. It's going to be a really good tourist draw for us, I believe, in the future. And our MPD award winners, want to thank our Officer of the Year, Officer Whitman, and Civilian of the Year, Lee LaBelle. I do want to tell you, when the police department moved, Lee LaBelle was the one that was in charge of moving, was it 20-some thousand pieces of evidence, I believe? Somewhere in that range, from one building to the next, and that's all got to be done under supervision and certified, and Lee did a fantastic job getting that all moved. Also, Telecommunicator of the Year was Samantha Jones, who's been with us, I think, about a dozen years now, which is a long time in that profession because it's so high stress. And our Dash Award went to our SRO Officer Parker, who fosters children. And the Dash Award, it's the Chief's Award for, we've all seen the dash between when you're born and when you die, this is the person that makes a lot of that dash, and that was Mr. Parker. We're going to have some, speaking of fire department, we're going to have some photos with our 1938 fire truck, and that is an original truck that we just bought back within the last six months. That'll be set up next to Town Hall on December 10th, 11th, 17th, and 18th for photos. Not sure what to say about this, I've never seen a diaper tree, but evidently we ran low on ornaments. We've got a diaper tree collection at the public library, that is a need in the community, so you can take your donations to that. We've also got donations for the mittens and meals. Collection boxes are throughout town, there's one outside here for winter clothing items and non-perishable food, so we appreciate you donating to those. Public Library's got a sensory-friendly visits with Mrs. Claus, and that is spelled that way on purpose, is on December 12th, 13th, and 14th. So look forward to that. And our giving tree, Mooresville Public Library branches, both the downtown branch and the west branch have the giving tree up if you want to make some donations there. And finally, a few last things, our employee engagement committees partner with Best of Both Worlds Organization, and they're having a Christmas ball-out donation. We've got donation boxes out for that as well, with the goal of over 100 sports balls. We had a great concert here with the Embers, sold-out audience for Joel Knox for the holidays. And our classic Christmas is coming up. If you have never seen it, on the right-hand side of the picture, the giant snow globe is, I think, one of the coolest things on the planet. But that's always a great event. We'll have a lot going on in the downtown. Also, Charlotte Symphony will be at the Performing Arts Center. If you have never seen our spectacular Performing Arts Center, this will be a good chance to see it. It seats around 1,400, it is one of the nicest in a community of our size in the state. We've also got a mural unveiling, a lot, a lot of issues, a lot of things going on here, a lot of good, good things. Got our mural unveiling on December the 15th, that's back behind the Mac Center. And we start our 150th kickoff with the fireworks show out at Langtree on December the 31st, and you'll notice that's four to seven. So that's a little earlier event, kid-friendly event, and we hope a lot of folks will come out to that. Mr. Mayor, a lot going on. Happy to take questions.
It sure is. Thank you, Mr. Heeman. Comments or questions from the Board? Thank you very much. Great update. Thank you. Commissioners, I want to direct your attention to adjustments to the agenda. As you noted, we did have a retirement recognition that was added. Additionally, on consent agenda, note that we will be removing Consent Item 6B. There will be an addition to the consent as 6E. It's a request from Human Resources to reclassify two firefighter positions, and we will add 6F, and that too is a request from Human Resources to reclassify five firefighter positions. Additionally, I'll direct your attention to the regular agenda. If you take a look at Agenda Item 7D of the regular agenda, that will be amended, it's regarding scheduling public hearings. Please note on public hearings. Please note on January 17th, the annexation request by Ryan Lane Lott has been removed. There's been an addition for the Mooresville Bicycle Plan, has been added to that Agenda item. And then for Closed Session, we have added in the matter a Custodial Law Enforcement Agency recording sought by Mike Stolper. So Commissioners, with that, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the adjustments to the Agenda, the Consent and Regular Agenda as presented.
So moved, Mayor.
Commissioner Compton's made the motions, or second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dingler. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners and ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 7A. This is a public hearing, but I'd like to just review the public comments as part of the public hearing and what this procedure looks like. So unlike public comment regarding general matters held at the beginning of our first meeting of the month, public comment as part of a public hearing is meant to specifically address a particular Agenda item being considered by the Board. Those wishing to speak must sign up prior to the meeting, online, or by calling the Town Clerk by 4:30 PM the day of the meeting. A public hearing entails a staff presentation of 15 minutes, an applicant presentation of 15 minutes, with both the staff and applicant having additional time to address any questions from the Board. At the end of those presentations, I will call on citizens who have signed up prior to the meeting. Each speaker from the public will have three minutes to speak and may not bank or lend time to another unless four or more people supporting the same position designate a single speaker to represent them. In such case, the designated speaker will be given six minutes to speak to the Board. The total time for public comment will be limited to 30 minutes, or the first 10 speakers, whichever occurs first. Once public comment ends, the applicant will have five minutes of rebuttal. So we have received numerous requests for public comment for this public hearing, for folks that are representing more than four people. And so there are several people that will be given the opportunity to speak for six minutes. I will recognize that individual and then ask that who they're representing, if they are present, to please stand or raise their hand. Because we are limited in our time for our public comment portion, and I know there's a lot of you here who want to be heard and seen, it will be my point to make sure that you are recognized at the end of the public comment in terms of by a show of hands if you are here in support of or against the project. That way, though we can't hear from each and every one of you, you took the time to come out this evening, so I want to make sure, and the Board wants to make sure, they know why you're here and where you stand, okay? I do expect that everybody will be civil and show, really be positive consideration so that everyone that's speaking can be heard and listened to. If you're applauding and clapping and hooting and hollering, it just distracts everybody, and it does not work to anybody's advantage. Okay? I'm just telling you, some of you have been down here before, and you know how it works. So I ask you to please, I know there's very emotional compassion about what position you stand, I just, I ask you, please, to be respectful of all the speakers, respectful of this Board, and the applicant, and those who are speaking for and against, so that everybody can be heard and this Board can make a well-informed and considerate decision. So with that, the Chair's going to open up the public hearing and recognize Ms. Martin.
This application for us this evening is from Jerry and Brenda Waugh. The applicant is River Rock Development. The site is located off of Bloom Road and Beechtree Road. It's approximately 21 acres, and it's inside the town limits already. It's in Ward 4. Here's a couple site photos. You can see the current conditions. So the current district is residential limited service, which only allows residential and institutional uses. Two dwellings, units per acre would be permitted, which would be 43 units. The request is a conditional request for traditional neighborhood, which would allow multifamily recreational-type uses and utilities. The request would be for 5.06 dwelling units per acre, or 108 dwelling units total. The map on the screen shows existing development nearby in the town limits. So there's 17.97 for Cypress Point, which extends from a 2016 rezoning, three dwelling units per acre for the Farms, 6.78 for Forest Lake, 2.79 for the courtyards at Bloom, and then two dwelling units or less for the Iredell County properties on the peninsula. The site is also within the critical area of the watershed, limiting impervious to 50%. On November 15th of '21, the site was not adjacent to the contiguous corporate limits. Therefore, the site was not eligible for ETJ extension. In order to receive Town of Mooresville zoning, the property owner had to annex in. It was the Board's policy at the time to establish a low-intensity based district with the expectation that a conditional project would return to the Town Board. Changes associated with 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes now allow concurrent rezoning and annexations whether inside or outside the town's ETJ. I share this bit of history as a note that it was never the applicant's intention or desire to develop this site at two dwelling units per acre. Had they come through our process today, they could have requested a conditional project be heard in advance of annexation. In May of 2022, the applicant's conditional request was denied, in part due to questions over a roundabout and elimination of a left-turn lane onto Brawley School Road. The applicants then conducted additional traffic analysis, which was shared with the Town Board, and thus they were permitted to return through our process. Most recently, the applicants held a meeting with approximately 70 adjacent property owners to reshare project information and the results from the additional traffic analysis, which indicated a roundabout would fail due to inadequate vehicle stacking. The adjacent property owners continue to express dissatisfaction with the project related to traffic density. The project itself has not changed from the last time it came before the Town Board. The proposal includes a maximum of 108 multifamily units in the form of one-story triplexes with two-car garages for the in-units and a single-car garage for the center unit. The applicants have indicated they're open to additional conditions regarding accessibility and age restrictions, but such conditions are not currently included in your draft ordinance. The project includes a central green leading to an interior amenity area with a walking trail, clubhouse, and pickleball court for future residents. The project is bounded to the northwest with a TreeSave area providing additional buffering to the Springfield neighborhood and TreeSave along Beechtree Road. Additionally, the POA or HOA will maintain any new trees planted in the public right-of-way. Some changes have been made off-site due to the additional traffic analysis, most notably the addition of a third lane on Bloom Road to allow two southbound turn lanes and one right turn lane onto Brawley School Road. The project would also include the extension of sidewalks from the site to Brawley School Road on both sides of the road. The town's transportation engineer is in attendance tonight, should the Board have any questions related to this. Overall, staff finds the site is compatible with the area, provides a logical transition, logical and orderly development pattern, and can be reasonably serviced by the town. However, the proposal is partially consistent with the Town of Mooresville's future land use plan. Specifically, the site and area is designated as Peninsula Residential with a desired density of two dwelling units per acre. However, staff recognizes that the One Mooresville Plan has a broad-brush stroke of Peninsula Residential over Brawley School Road, ignoring Mooresville's development pattern and a neighborhood node that touches the site. Therefore, staff recommends amending the One Mooresville Plan to Neighborhood Residential to better reflect an appropriate transition between the low-density areas along the shoreline and the high-intensity uses at the node. Such action would be reflective of the suburban development pattern of in-town properties on Brawley School Road. To conclude, staff recommends approval of the request with all voluntary conditions presented and amendment to the One Mooresville Plan. The Planning Board voted for, one, against recommendation of the approval at their October meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Comments or questions, Commissioners? For Ms. Martin. Comments or questions for staff? Hearing none, I'll invite the applicant forward.
Good evening, Mayor Robert Davidson and Commissioners. I'm here appearing for the applicant, River Rock, this evening. Erica, I want to first commend Erica. She's done a wonderful presentation, very thorough. I like the details. I like the bullet points. So the applicant will not spend a lot of time rehashing what's been presented to you, but rather move to, first, how we're here this evening. And if you recall back in March of 2022, up on your screen before you is the original agree to traffic mitigation measures by the town engineer and by NC DOT. And those were very specific. To restripe and maximize the existing right-hand turn lane to a shared right and left, to modify the traffic signal, to install do-not-block signs at the intersections of Bloom Road and ABJ Way, and to mark those intersections with do-not-block. What brought us here this evening with the approval of the waiver is these above-and-beyond additional improvements that we're told are approximately $250,000 to $350,000. And those are specifically to restripe and maximize two southbound turn lanes, which Erica indicated to you. So those are two left-hand turn lanes on the Brawley School Road, and construction of an exclusive right-hand turn lane. So to basically widen the intersection, therefore creating a better flow and less stacking. To modify the traffic signal head on Brawley School and Bloom Road, to accommodate those southbound movements. To design and construct sidewalks on both sides of Bloom Road. Now, quite often, an applicant will come before you, and they'll just indicate what those mean without letting you know specifically what those mean. So when you restripe, well, number one, when you restripe and you maximize the two southbound lanes, what you essentially do is you eliminate stacking at that signal head on Brawley School. So it allows more cars to turn left when the signal changes, and it stops the blocking of ABJ Way and Beechtree. Two, when you modify the signal head, you promote free-flowing. You change the timing. And when you design and construct sidewalks on both sides of Bloom Road, what you've essentially done is you've created both the walkability and the connectivity for the pedestrians and your citizens. The next slide talks about the logical transition. So if you'll notice on the slide, you'll see the designation CM or Corridor of Mixed Use, and HB CD, one parcel being within the town jurisdiction, one being within the county jurisdiction. But both are essentially commercial. Both, but this piece of property that we're presenting before you this evening for rezoning. And it's a logical transition from a more intense development down to a far lesser intense development. The next slide is basically a rehashing of one Mooresville Plan that Erica mentioned to you, where you can show the overlay of the wall parcel with your neighborhood node center. And as we've mentioned previously, this is a less intense when we about that node. And this was done, frankly, intentionally, because what is not shown is the adjoining residential neighborhoods. So we did it to be less intensive and more in harmony with the surroundings of the wall parcel. When you talk about the benefits of these homes, and this is probably the most important slide in my presentation this evening. We have to consider your Mooresville comprehensive housing strategy. And it specifically calls out the need for age-friendly communities, highlighting empty nesters and seniors. We've attempted to do that here this evening. So the benefits of these homes are both universal and diverse. They provide accessibility, which addresses ADA compliance. Examples included are no stairs into and within the homes themselves, simply zero steps. We provide grabbar blocking within all the bathrooms. It allows for the installation of grabbars that will maintain up to 250 pounds in any direction. Circulation throughout the homes accommodating wheelchairs and walkers veer wider doorways and hallways. All of these are additional costs to construct. We address specific needs within the communities, and these are not in your package, but we're saying before you this evening, we're agreeing to restrict these to 55 and older, and up to 15% of these homes for veterans. All of the homes presented are designed and constructed to be R3 Type B ADA standards. All of these homes are designed and constructed to be meet or exceed the current North Carolina Building Code related to R3 Type B ADA standards. These type homes do provide a reasonable and logical transition from commercial and the surrounding property. It does, as I mentioned, with your Mooresville comprehensive housing strategy, it does provide housing for older adults and grandparents within our community. It meets and satisfies the underserved population of those who may have disabilities and are veterans. And as we saw here this evening, when we consider our police officers, when we consider our families, who are recognizing their lifetime and commitment to the value of our lives and the quality and the safety, I think all of us here this evening understand that quite often they retire with limited financial means. This proposed development addresses the type of homes that would fill their housing needs. It's certainly been a pleasure to be here this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any comments or questions for the applicant? Commissioner West?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. David, just to confirm, what I'm hearing is all of these units, 100% of them, well, 108, will have the wider hallways, the wider doorways?
Yes, sir.
And when you say in the 15% will be available for veterans?
Yes, sir.
And how is that going to be managed?
So it'll first begin with the application process. We'll identify who's a veteran and who's not, as well as their age and all the necessary information. And each year, we have an annual report. In that report, it will tell us specifically where we are percentage-wise. Are we at 8%, 10%, and up to 15%? So that's how we'll monitor each development.
One other question. So when you talk about first responders and veterans, and, you know, what their retirement benefits look like, I mean, the product, I think, I like the product, is, is there a qualification process as part of this affordable housing? Or how are we serving that market?
Affordable is a difficult definition for all of us. But what we're simply saying, these are rental homes, so it allows them to maintain their retirements in place. They're not spending money to acquire a home, but they can enjoy themselves. All these homes are maintained. All these homes are maintained. We will have maintenance folks on site. So it provides them the quality of living at a much lesser cost than ordinary to go purchase a home.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just some comments or questions for the applicant? Commissioner Houston?
Yes, I guess my question. I've received emails from different ones from the area.
Yes, sir.
And a lot of them asked a question about bringing down the value of their property with these homes. Could you address that some way for us?
Commissioner, that's a great question. I appreciate you asking it. What's interesting about this development and the quality of these homes that we're talking about and the additional cost of construction, when you consider 108 units to build out, I am told, now, we don't have final cost because it's not engineered and supplies, we know what supplies look like, have not been ordered. But on average, each of these individual single-family ranch homes costs between $350,000 to $400,000 to construct. So it's certainly not going to devalue anyone's home.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir?
Just some comments or questions? Commissioner Compton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at your map of the proposed turn lanes, and I see crosswalks at Brawley School Road. But are you putting some pedestrian safety along with your street and traffic improvements? Such as up there where Beech Tree comes out, for instance? Crosswalks, anything there to get the pedestrians across? We're talking probably a busy intersection or something? Is that something? You have them on Brawley School Road. Didn't know if you had any. And you're adding sidewalks, I presume?
Yes, sir.
Then if the crosswalks would go up from that to your property?
The answer is yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just some comments or questions? Commissioner Qualls?
I just wanted to get a little bit more clarification. I know when this came earlier, it was age-targeted at 55. And you were mentioning that it's now
Age restricted.
Age restricted. Is that any kind of conflict as far as, you know, their housing and rental part of that?
Another great question. We investigated that, and we were told no, ma'am. There is no concern.
So the age restricted over 55, and then the additional proposed restriction is that there would be, was it 15% would be veteran?
Up to 15% for veterans housing.
That's all the questions I have.
Just some comments or questions? Commissioner DeWes?
I'm not sure if this is for you or for the town, but when you guys did the transportation study?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us how frequently, because of preventing the backup and the traffic there, how many light cycles would people expect to sit through in order to get through that intersection?
I am told on, Erica, you may be able to better answer this than I, but I am told that the original, when they, under the original TIA, the findings were that if you were turning left southbound, that the most occupants up there during the peak hours, no more than one cycle.
And our transportation engineer, Kami Weckerly, is here, if you'd like to call her forward.
Before we do that, I want to make sure if there's any additional comments, so save that question. We'll bring Kami up to discuss that. But I want to give the board additional opportunity for any other comments or questions. And then I'd like to recognize Ms. Crawford to review the conditions that the applicant has agreed to.
Thank you, Mayor. On page 11 of the agenda packet, there's a list of non-voluntary conditions. Mr. Davidson, I believe, Mr. Davis, I'm looking at the nine conditions on page 11. And just for the record, is the applicant agreeable to those conditions as presented?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So Commissioners, because as Mr. Davis acknowledged that they're not, these were not in your packet, I don't believe they're part of the conditions that have been presented. If there's conditions about A, age restriction, B, ADA compliant?
Yeah. And let me Let me address that really quick. I think there was a question about age restriction or placing a percentage of homes for veterans. I do not recommend that the board place those as zoning conditions. I'm sure they could be part of restrictive covenants within this community, but really, this is a land use decision, and conditions should not be placed on the property that are specific to the owner or the resident of the property. Now, with respect to the ADA accessibility, I believe that I heard that the applicant was agreeable that there would be no stairs into or within the home, that grab bars would be installed within all bathrooms, and circulation throughout the home to accommodate wheelchairs and walkers. If that's a condition that the board would like to place on that, that could be added to this, if that is what the board would like.
The applicant is certainly agreeable.
Commissioners?
Yes.
Commissioner Compton?
Ms. Crawford, that be called ADA compliant? Or will it be everything you mentioned, such as grab bars?
I think it's better to be specific as to what exactly would be installed versus saying ADA compliant.
Okay, thank you. I would suggest ADA standards.
Yes. Pursuant to ADA standards.
To follow the North Carolina Building Code.
And you're agreeable to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant before I call Ms. Weckerly up to address Commissioner DeWes's question about the signalization? Thank you, sir. Kami?
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners. To answer the question regarding the number of cycles, I don't have that level of detail that was completed in the TIA, doesn't quite go to that level of detail. But to help give some understanding of delay at the intersection, how long somebody would have to wait, under the, and this is from the TIA analysis, which I believe the traffic engineer that completed the analysis is also here. In existing conditions at that intersection, sorry, I'm on the wrong page. In existing conditions, the delay for that southbound movement is 75 seconds. And we're looking at what the future build condition would be with, this one is considering the three lanes and the dual lefts, would be actually 70 seconds. So that is an increase, or actually a decrease in the delay and the benefit to the amount of time that somebody would be waiting to turn left.
Commissioner DeWes, do you have any additional questions?
So I'm just wondering, does that cover rush hour or just normal conditions? Where does that actually apply, those numbers that we're getting?
The TIA looks at the worst time of day in the AM and in the PM. So actually, those numbers I gave you were for the AM. If I look at the PM, the existing delay is actually 60 seconds to make a southbound left. And in the future, with three lanes, it would actually be 56 seconds. So you would gain four seconds on average during the PM peak hour.
And that would be with the addition of the homes that we're looking at here?
That's correct.
Just some comments or questions for staff? Commissioner Dingler?
Kamiel, just in your professional opinion, from one of the last public hearings, the biggest concern was about Beech Tree, cars stopped at the intersections, lining, stacking past them, excuse me. And they can't make any type of move because they're stuck at a stop sign. With the dual left turn and the right turn, and with the new possible timing of the intersection that you're describing, do you feel that that'll give those, these folks or these residents a way out of Beech Tree versus where they're constantly stacked in there? Does that make sense?
It does.
Because that was always the biggest concern, and that was a lot of my note votes for two of them, at least anyhow. So what's your thoughts on that?
So under the original TIA, it did show every so often some stacking back beyond Beech Tree. With the dual left and the additional lane, it creates that double stacking, and you cut that queue or that amount of vehicles, you cut that in half as far as the distance that they're backing up to that intersection at Beech Tree. If we look at the delay from somebody leaving Beech Tree, so the eastbound right turn movement, have that information here. In the AM, it did not show, it showed a minimal 0.4 seconds impact, and so that was at a level of service B is what that looked like in the AM. And in the PM, that was actually no change there, and it was level service A. So the amount of delay at that intersection is very light on average. During the worst times of day, you might see, you know, some delay. It is an average, but with the dual left, that certainly, that stacking back to Beech Tree, at least in the model, was not present.
I appreciate that. I don't believe there's really anyone that wants to see a lot more growth. I get that. But the whole concerns I've always had, and most of this board has, is the ability to allow something to move forward and address some concerns that's out there now. And if we can get these folks out of these intersections and get them onto the roadway, at least get them moving versus sitting, you know, maybe that's the win. So I value that. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Houston, did you have a comment?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Does not Bloom Road circle back into Forest Lake Road also by the school? Or it does the dead end beach?
Bloom Road, if you turn left on, if you're coming from Brawley and go up Bloom, and you turn left at Beech Tree, that goes all the way up to Yellow Bell, which accesses Forest Lake Boulevard.
So it is another interestway off there to the red light at Forest Lake, right?
Yes. If you continue on Bloom, Bloom, I believe, Dead Ends. But you can circle back around to Brawley if you go up Beech Tree, up towards Yellow Bell, and circle back around.
I guess my question is that if it's an emergency down there, it is the exit to get out?
There is.
Just some comments or questions for staff? Commissioner Qualls?
Kami, just to clarify, this is a state road, would obviously stay a state road. Presently, as it is now, just the two lane, about how many cars can stack from Brawley back up to Beech Tree in that single lane, just roughly?
I do not. It's about 20 feet per, when you're estimating, it's about 20 feet per vehicle. So I'm not certain what that distance is there to measure it out. Maybe I can do that and get an answer back to you, but I do not have the answer to that. The engineer completing the analysis might have that information.
It looks like, I mean, based on what we've got up on the screen, the proposed turn lane improvements, the dual lefts, will do 29 vehicle stacking. I'm going to guess that's both lanes together. Does that look like that's probably right, or is that 29 per lane?
I don't know the answer to that for certain.
If the applicant, if their engineer's here, and when we have a rebuttal, you can certainly answer that at that time.
Just kind of curious, presently versus what this can add to for vehicles moving cars per lane?
Okay, I'm being told that's 11 cars per lane, so 22 total vehicles.
Based on this? Say that again, I'm sorry if I missed, kind of what?
11 cars are 230 feet, ma'am.
So is that 11 cars per lane?
Yes.
So 29 total cars. Versus maybe what it is now, that's 11? Assume it's only one lane?
It's only one lane now.
So 11 cars versus 29 being able to move through that intersection at the same time?
Yes.
And maybe this is more of a question for Erica, but if this property improves at the current zoning of R2, and only, what, 43 houses, I think you said, or 48? What kind of developer road improvements will we get for that kind of development?
That's really a Kami question. None. There's only 43. There would be no TIA required.
So no TIA equals no road improvements?
Correct.
Commissioners, additional comments or questions for staff at this time? Certainly, we can bring them back up after we take public comment. Are y'all ready for public comment? Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and open up for public comment. As I indicated, we did have multiple people sign up to speak, and just based on our policy, if I were to go through the first six speakers, we would be at 30 minutes, because I have multiple people signed up for six minutes, because they're representing people, additional people here. But at the chair's discretion, I do have, I could take up to 10, which would take additional 12 minutes, Commissioners, if you're agreeable to that. So I just want to again recognize everyone that's made it out here this evening. So the first person up for public comment, and you have three minutes, is Cliff Holmesley.
Appreciate the opportunity to appear in front of the board. What I'd like to do, if possible, Honorable Mayor, would be to defer my comments into the time when there's a rebuttal. Is it possible for me to do that? I represent the landowner, the walls.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Kenneth Gorni, I'm sorry, Kenneth Gorni, I have you down for six minutes, representing quite a large group. So if you could ask your group, whoever you're representing, to at least raise their hand, that would be helpful? Okay?
Stand up.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Mr. Gorni, you have six minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for your service to our community. I'm Ken Gorni. I live at 146 Valley Mist Lane, which is in the courtyards of Bloom Point, which is located in the town of Mooresville. I'm here this evening with 36 of my neighbors, and they've asked me to speak on their behalf. We've got over one-third of our community represented here tonight. Thanks all for coming. I recommend to you that the proposed zoning change from residential limited service to traditional neighborhood conditional be denied. While I respect the right of the current owners to sell this land, it is important for you to fully consider the impact of a zoning change. First, the One Mooresville Plan for the Peninsula Residential calls specifically for single-family residential detached housing, except along major streets. There is no compelling reason that I see to change that. Many of us in my neighborhood chose to live where we do because of the One Mooresville Plan. If you ignore this time for this track, then what happens to the adjacent track, which is also farmland and on down Bloom Road? Courtyards at Bloom Point, second point, courtyards at Bloom Point is individually-owned, single-family residential detached homes with a density of 2.79 units per acre. The proposed density of over five units per acre of attached rental units is significantly denser than the courtyards at Bloom Point. You can't, also, you can't compare owner-occupied detached homes to attached rental units. They attract different types of residents. Traffic, traffic, traffic is an increasing concern. I expect that was not addressed in the, in the TIA, is the proposed site plan for 180-unit apartment complex at the corner of Bloom Road and Brawley School Road. It has an entrance, the preliminary plan has an entrance on Bloom Road. Even with the addition of a second left turn lane, this has the likelihood of creating a traffic choke point on Bloom Road. This can't be solved with another traffic light. There are already three in a one-half mile stretch of Brawley School from Stutz Road, Bloom Road, and Forest Lake. So why do we do a zoning change that will only make the problem worse? So, why do we zone, do a zoning change that will only make the problem worse? The second left turn lane is also going to cause accidents. It's difficult today to make, to turn left on Brawley School and stay in just one lane. It's just too tight. I attended the developers informational meeting and the planning boarding, planning board meeting in October. I did not hear anything that significantly changes the project. There is no change in the proposed density and it is my understanding that density was one of the primary reasons the zoning request change was denied by the town commissioners in May. I'm not sure why it is even on the agenda. In closing, I strongly urge you to make the same decision that you made in May to keep the current zoning of RLS and deny the rezoning request. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I have Jason Cox for six minutes, representing six people.
Mayor and Board, thank you so much for the time tonight. Sorry, I'm a little slower walking up than, than other people, but I want to speak in, in support of this project. And my reason for speaking in support of the project is I am a renter. I, I've had a mess for 28 years. It's difficult for me to handle steps, elevators, basically all the basic things, changing light bulbs, mopping my house. So, when this concept came up on, on my agenda, I said, geez, these guys are going to build what I need. This isn't something about, for me, traffic. This is more about a lifestyle for people who have a disease like mine. I stumble, I don't do stairs well, I don't do ladders, I don't, you know, I, when I was younger, I played football many years. But now it's not, it's not the same. So, I'm asking that you guys would approve a project like this, people like me. Right now, I rent, I live in an apartment building. And the apartment building, why? Because I can take an elevator up, I don't have to do the stairs. I don't want to do stairs and it makes sense for me to, I can live in a place where I don't have to do things that, that my body doesn't do anymore. So, for me, this project makes sense because it's going to change the lifestyle for people who are older or people who are younger. I'm, I'm 49, I'm not 55, but what's nice with this, with what they're proposing is that the 55 and over, you can do up to a 20% allocation for people who are under 55. I would be a person who would be on that list. I live in Mooresville, I live right now at the Osprey down at Langtree. Again, I moved there, out of the house, I sold, I had too many steps. So, my purpose in coming tonight was I want to give these guys credit for accommodating something that hasn't been around and I have not seen in our area and I had to move into a building with an elevator to do it. So, this is something that I, I just feel that the, the end result is better than the smaller items about, you know, you're saying it's too dense, but you're going to have people who don't move as much, they don't travel as much, they're not on the road as much. So, why is that going to be an issue if you have a bunch of units for people who don't get on the roads at the same time that everybody else is? Why would that be a problem? So, to me, I live in, I live, I pay rent, I live, I, I worked in both management for 10 years, I've got a couple of master's degrees and I'm kind of not a dumb guy, I guess, but I really just want people to know, it can help, it's going to help. And their avocations to helping people like me and to helping veterans, this is not just a cause where you're looking at it going, oh, it's a rental community, we're going to make money. No, it's fixing, it's fixing a problem that is there that people don't see. So, I have, my parents are 81, 82, they live in Indiana. And what they want to see is, they want to see me in a place where they can go to bed at night and go, hey, you know what, he's safe. That's all they, that's all they want to know. Wherever I live, they want to say, hey, you know what, he has this thing, I've had it for 28 years, they've helped me all the way through. They're not, they're going to, they're going to probably, you know, everybody doesn't live forever, but they do want to say, I want, I want them to feel like, oh, when they, when they go to bed at night, I'm, I'm okay in wherever I'm at. So, this idea, this, this building made sense to me and I had to come out and talk, and talk about it. But, this is not, I, I think our, our big, our, our big hangup on this one is going to be the traffic issue. I lived in Los Angeles, guys. This is, this isn't, this isn't a traffic problem. I mean, and, and the way we got to look at this is, is that the problem that it's addressing is larger than the issues that we're, that we're talking about right now. So, with that, I will yield the rest of my time.
Mr. Cox, could you just, I know you were here representing several people, could you have them just, raise, raise their hand?
I, I have, the people who I'm representing are, are people who are in Langtree and they're not able to come up here.
So I do, I did get confirmation from the town clerk that you did have six people that were verified that you were representing. I, I just want to give them the opportunity that they were physically here, that they could raise their hand. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dustin McClure, I have you for six minutes as well, representing four people. If your folks are here, if you can get them to raise their hand, that'd be great.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm originally signed up for four people, three of which have emailed into the town.
That's right.
And then one of which is Nick Marinelli, who is in the back of the audience.
That's fine, that's been confirmed.
But I would like to yield my time to Lieutenant Colonel Richard Cantwell, if I could do that.
For six minutes?
Yes.
Who, who is he representing?
He would be representing just a public speaker, but representing some of our, my behalf.
I'd like for you to go ahead and just if you could provide your comment, since I had you signed up.
Okay, fair enough. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Dustin McClure and I live at 342 Bloom Road, less than one mile away from the proposed development. I'm speaking this evening on behalf of Rob Tingman, one of my neighbors, who lives at 350 Bloom Road, Tara Wallace, who lives at 176 Honey Suckle Creek Loop, and Garrison Davis, who lives at 152 Ragsdale Trail, all in Mooresville, and Nick Marinelli, who is here this evening. To give you guys a little bit about my background, I'm a licensed North Carolina real estate broker. I've been licensed since 2007 and I, along with, with Nick, started a real estate brokerage and development firm here in Mooresville in 2008. I'm also a lifelong resident of the area. Other than going away to college for a few years, I've lived in this area my entire life and I've seen the tremendous growth over the years and believe that the growth is, is truly a testament of, of our town being a wonderful place to live. Tonight, I'm speaking in favor of this project. I, along with a lot of my friends and clients who live on the west side of Mooresville, have aging parents and grandparents and I believe that there's a real need for a project like the one presented before you this evening. That provides single-story ranch plans. Today, while preparing a few notes for this presentation, I pulled up stats from our local MLS just to see what was currently available in the market. As of today, in the ZIP code 28117, which is, population is somewhere around 40,000 residents, there were three rentals available that were single-story ranch plans and with that many residents, only three available that were single-story ranch product that someone that maybe have a mobility issue or needs to utilize a wheelchair could, could utilize. I think this stat alone proves that there's a real need for this segment of the market. Having a developer that's willing to put restrictions in place to ensure that these units will always be 55 and over and that a portion of the units we reserve for veterans is a real benefit for our town. Living on Bloom Road, I have observed firsthand, driving this road intersection daily during peak times. I have two kids that attend Woodland Heights Elementary School and I drop them off at school each morning. I travel through the intersection sometimes 45, 45 times a day at peak times and very rarely do I have to wait more than one full cycle at this intersection, in this morning or evening. In 2012, when I moved into my home, it was prior to the EVCON community being built, there wasn't even a stoplight at the Bloom and Brawley School, that intersection. And it was definitely a dangerous intersection at that time, trying to cross over two lanes on Brawley School Road and make that left, it was dangerous. Once the, since the light was added, it's made a, this intersection one of the, probably one of the easiest to navigate in the entire town. I think that the, the developer has done a great job of listening to the concerns of the local community and going above and beyond on all the proposed traffic mitigations. The additional left turn lane would ensure that even with a few additional vehicles, we still won't have to wait through, through additional light cycles. Much like the EVCON community, there will be a very minimal impact of roads during peak travel times. Plus, honestly, I think that it'll be great to keep these residents within our community. As I close on my comments this evening, I would recommend that you vote in favor of this project based on the need for the community and the limited additional impact on our schools and roads. I believe that this type of product and density provides a logical transition from the commercial areas along Brawley School Road to the lower density development along Bloom and Beaton Path and Beach Tree. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Jansen, I have you down for six minutes, representing four more people. And if I could, if, if any of your folks are here, they could certainly raise their hand, that'd be appreciated.
No, they emailed, I'm not certain if they're here.
I did get confirmation from the clerk that they're all been certified.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dan Jansen. I've been a Mooresville resident for 22 years. I'd like to give you just a little background on who I am, why I'm here tonight in support of this project. Although I've been in this area for nearly 25 years, I was born and raised in Wisconsin. I was a member of the US Speed Skating Team, represented the United States internationally for 14 years. I competed in four Olympic Games, won an Olympic gold medal in 1994 in Lillehammer, Norway. My wife Karen and I settled here back in 2000. We've raised two daughters in the area, got them both through college, one at Clemson, one at NC State. We've lived down the Brawley Peninsula since before the road was developed, was made into two lanes. We love the lake, we love the development, we love the community, the people, the friends we've made in this area. I want to share a couple of reasons and examples that I think we need a community in this area of the kind that River Rock wants to develop. River Rock wants to build a neighborhood of 55 and older, single-story ranch homes with no stairs. This would have been such a perfect option for my parents if they were still with us. They had a ground floor condo in Davidson. Their neighbors, however, ranged from the elderly to college students and it just wasn't an ideal place for them to spend the final years of their lives. My in-laws are presently going through a similar situation. They are in New Orleans, they live in a large home by themselves, all bedrooms, all upstairs. I've told my wife on many occasions, we are going to get that call one day and it's probably going to be sooner rather than later, that one or both of them has fallen down the stairs and I just pray that they will agree to a move to a neighborhood like this before we get that call that could have been avoided. The other personal example of why a community like, of this type resonates with me is that I come from a very large Midwestern family and the youngest of nine children. The thing that may be a little different, other than the size of our family, is that so many people in my family serve their communities as means to earn a living. My father was a police officer for 33 years, my mother was a neonatal nurse. Within our extended family, there are nine police officers. Four of my five sisters became nurses and we threw in a couple of firemen for a good measure. They're all heroes of mine for what they chose to do and how they live their lives. Despite the thousands of hours that each of them has given to make their communities better places, most of us know these are not the most lucrative professions. Most of them have gotten part-time jobs in their retirement in order to make ends meet. I'm not asking you to feel sorry for them, they would all choose to do it all over again. But I look at a community like this and I see an ideal place for them to settle. Very affordable homes, neighbors they can all relate to and a wonder community, wonderful community like we all live in in Mooresville. And a few words, if I may, about River Rock and the people who make up River Rock. I've known Dan Hughes and Jerry Mosley for at least 10 years. This is not some company from out of state who discovered a piece of land and don't know anything about the area. They, they all live here in Mooresville, they've chosen to raise their families in this area, they care about the community and all the concerns that you hear tonight. As for their character, just a quick example of that, back while I was skating, I lost a sister to leukemia. I promised when I retired I'd do something to give back, so I started a foundation. And though we give to several deserving causes, our main focus is helping families affected by cancer with their non-medical expenses. Everybody knows about the medical bills, but they often forget about the day-to-day expenses, the travel, the room and board, the basic needs become difficult to afford like heat, electric, water, auto expenses. These are the things that my foundation helps these families with. My foundation also partners with another organization called Cool Kids Campaign, which I serve on the board of directors. Cool Kids is, is all about bettering the lives of the kids with cancer. Three years ago, we opened up a clubhouse for these kids down at exit 25 in Huntersville. It's a place for them to be able to get away from their treatment for a while, to forget about the cancer they're fighting. We do what we call smile celebrations, themed birthday parties, arts and crafts, movie nights, tutoring. We let the parents drop their children off for a couple hours so they can go out for dinner and a movie and relieve the, some of the stress that they're going through. My point is between the Cool Kids and the Dan Jansen Foundation, we try our best to take care of the entire family, family's needs. I have an annual fundraiser here in Mooresville every October for the past eight years. We have a concert, celebrity golf tournament, auction, et cetera. I decided to do this and to bring my foundation's reach to this area, I approached many businesses in the area for help. When I went to Dan and Jerry and asked them if they would be willing to help, they had one question, what can we do? What do you need? Eight years down the road, they continue to help and continue to enable us to help over 100 families every year. I truly believe that this piece of land will be developed at some point, whether this is now or, or in the future. Why don't we let good, honest, trustworthy company do that instead of someone we don't know? I'd like to close this evening by saying that I completely understand that there are two sides to this hearing, those for and against. I completely respect both sides and the reasons for both sides. No matter what happens, this is and will continue to be the community that most of us here tonight will live in for a long time. With that in mind, I ask all the speakers tonight and the non-speakers to listen respectfully, open your minds, remember that no matter what happens, we're all neighbors. Thank you very much and Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to call on Scott McCarron for three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Great following the gold medal winner, Dan Jansen, thanks for that. I would have gone first. My name is Scott McCarron. Tonight, I'm just going to tell you about who I am, why I'm here and why I'm in support of this project on Bloom Road. I'm a professional golfer, been on the PGA Tour for 20 years, was able to win three times out there on the PGA Tour chasing Tiger Woods around. Now I'm on the PGA Tour Champions, where I've won 11 times with a major. 2019, I was the Charles Schwab Cup winner, the season ending, the Jack Nicklaus Player of the Year and also the Arnold Palmer Award winner. I've been in Mooresville for six years. My wife and I moved from California and we could have moved anywhere in the country, but we chose Mooresville. The people are so friendly, the way of life. When I come home with the lake activities, I feel like I'm on vacation. And with the airport, Charlotte Douglas having non-stop flights pretty much anywhere in the United States, and I still travel 28 weeks a year playing golf, that helped out quite a bit. So, family is very important to me and what this provides is amazing, this project. I've got a brother and sister-in-law who live in California, he is getting ready to retire as a police officer and she's a school teacher. They're looking for a place to live, as you know. As you know, California is very expensive to live in, especially when we're retiring. They look at Mooresville and they really like it. This type of project would be perfect for them. But above that, my father Barry McCarron passed away this year in July, July sixteenth. He's the one who taught me everything I know, and I wouldn't be standing here in front of you today as a professional golfer if it wasn't for him. It's been difficult for my mom, and she's been, you know, we've been trying to find another place for her to live. This type of project would be perfect. She, the house she has now has some stairs in it, she's fallen down, but she's an independent woman and wants to be on her own. She doesn't want to live with the kids, and so we've been looking to bring her to Mooresville. If this project got approved, it would be about two years away, which would be just about right for my mom. And I, I really hope this project can go through. My mom is one of the greatest, greatest people I've ever met, and I'd like to have her closer to me. So with that, I hope that this project does get approved. And my mom, Kenneth, is not the wrong type of person. Thanks.
At this time, I'm going to go ahead, we've, we've reached our thirty minutes, but I do have four more folks I'm going to give time to, each having three minutes. So the first person is Rick Cantwell.
Mayor, Commissioners, and I'd like to say special thanks to Gary West, my fellow veteran taking issue with veteran issues in Mooresville, making sure it's straight, and I really appreciate that. One of the, my background, I graduated from West Point, Corps of Engineer Officer. I've lived in, in seventeen different states, been to eighty-seven countries, and since I've retired, one of the passions that I have is trying to assist the veteran community in reintegrating into the, the communities. Bring them out of the service, get them into a place where they can add value. Veterans are five times as likely to volunteer as their fellow citizens, so they add a lot of value. So what are the challenges? When I retired, there was a hundred and fifty-seven companies that did three-hundred-and-eighty-million dollars' worth of Department of Defense business in the North Carolina. Since that time, Forces Command, the, the Four-Star Command responsible for all Armed Forces in the United States is relocated to, to North Carolina at Fort Bragg, where I spent my last twelve years. We now have nine-hundred-and-ninety-seven companies doing three-point-two-billion dollars' worth of Department of Defense work in this state. One of the challenges of continuing that mission is having a good place to integrate those veterans into the communities, into the education systems, and into the companies. We were very successful in getting a lot of the schools reoriented to providing that training that would allow those veterans to be qualified to serve in the companies in this region. One of the biggest distractors from that was housing. One of our missions is to look for developments like this development company that has taken a passion for developing a community that would be fit for the veterans to have a special place to reintegrate into the communities, go through that education process, get that job, and then add value to the community. Having a community that, or a development that's already ADA compliant, many of our veterans come with some special needs, and that, that would be very beneficial. The other thing that really attracted me to this project is, as Gary will tell you, on a lot of our installations, this is the type of community that they have lived in throughout their service. The three and five unit, and they are very comfortable with that, and they will add a lot of value to this town. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service. Jack Benyon, three minutes.
My name is Jack Benyon, I live at Two-Sixty-Three Beaton Path in Mooresville. First, I'd like to point out that the slide that you have up on the screen behind you, it states, on the proposed plot, it states maximum building height is three stories, not the single story they've been talking about. They're also requesting that five units per acre, which is more than two times the current zoning, with three households per unit. If each household only has the two people, that would be their fifty-five-plus that the builder is highlighting, that would equate to thirty people per acre. The town, the county, and the state all agree that that plot is a WS-4CA critical watershed. Your UDO, Page Six, One Dot Six Dot Four, states that the more restricted provision between the three municipalities should control. County Land Development Code Four Point Eight Dot C, Section Two B, states all residential shall not exceed twenty-four percent built upon. The state, under their model watershed protective ordinance, states other residential and non-residential shall be allowed a maximum of twenty-four percent built upon. In that same ordinance, there's an Appendix C that states there's a provision that allows up to ten percent of each jurisdiction portion of the WS-4CA with a state application and approval. So with that approval, it appear that they would be able to build upon thirty-four percent, not fifty percent. If they cut down the units per acre, I would think that most of the people in the room would not have as much issue with the traffic, proposed traffic that's going to be coming in. Also, the TN Traditional Neighborhood, according to the UDO, that would also allow residential, retail, other things like bus stops, solar energy systems, wind energy, energy systems, family care homes, government services, and more. Those items really don't adhere to any of the current homes in the vicinity. I know there's a lot of talk tonight about the fifty-five-plus. The builder has stated in the past that they cannot restrict as being rentals, but they would be advertising towards that fifty-five-plus. So, to actually have a fifty-five-plus restricted area for a community like they have across the street, they can't say that that's actually what they're going to do, that's only what they're advertising for. I think that the walls...
Thank you, sir. Mr. William Harrod.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Bill Harrod, I live at One-Sixty-Six Palmer March Place. This evening, I'm asking the Town Council to join the zoning board in denying the proposal before you. There are no significant changes to the proposal from the one the Town Council denied previously. The property is already zoned RLS, allowing a build-by-right of two units per acre. The proposed project is a deviation to a high-density proposal, and, as was established when this was denied previously, the proposal is inconsistent with the One Mooresville Plan and is inconsistent with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan as outlined by the staff's report in April of this year. It is not partially compliant, it is inconsistent. The One Mooresville Plan specifically calls for development in the Peninsula Residential Area to be single-family detached housing with not more density than two units per acre. Traffic at the intersection of Bloom Road, Beechtree Road, ABJ Way, and Brawley School Road is already dangerously unsafe. The addition of a hundred and eight units will exacerbate the danger. I can provide pictures at nine-thirty in the morning when there are ten cars lined up on Bloom, blocking Brawley, blocking Beechtree, and a roll-off dumpster and trucks waiting on Beechtree. This morning at night, at eight-thirty, there were twelve cars lined up, and not all made it through the light. There is times when we often sit through more than one cycle. A few, and the backup, the stacking will prevent people from getting to the second left turn lane. A few months ago, there was a medical emergency on Bloom Road, on Brawley School, causing a backup of traffic all the way to I-77. And recently, when paving on Stutz Road took over one lane of Brawley School, the backup caused delays of an, over an hour. The traffic is already on the verge of being debilitatingly dangerous and could turn deadly. I spoke with the owner Pam, the owner of Classy Critters Resort, and with Lee, the owner of Charlotte Ski Boats, both of whom I believe are here tonight, and these are businesses located on ABJ Way. Both businesses oppose the rezoning request. Classy Critters has an average of sixty daily trips, and the majority of the drop-offs occur between eight and nine AM. Charlotte Ski Boats has more than fifty daily trips in the spring and summer, and these boats, these are towing boats trying to navigate that intersection. This intersection will become deadly if the proposal is approved. It's not an age-restricted community, there's a high likelihood that the impact will, will impact nearby schools, and there is no guarantee that any veterans will be residents there. Would those in the surrounding community who've come out tonight to join me in asking the Board to deny this, please stand.
Thank you, sir. Okay, thank you, you did my job for me. The final speaker is Catherine Kritz.
Mayor Atkins, Town Commissioners and Staff, my name is Kathy Kritz, and I've lived at Three-Ninety-Four Beechtree for the last forty-four years. In those years, the neighbors have joined together to have Beechtree Road paved, to have the area zoned R-twenty, and to work with the Iredal State's Full School System to preserve our neighborhood while welcoming change and the needed growth for the future of our young people. We are not against ADA or veterans-supporting housing units. We are opposed to the higher-density development based on safety and traffic concerns. Beechtree Road and connecting roads have roughly a hundred residential owners. There are another approximate hundred homes between Beechtree and Forest Lake. Now consider that there are five-hundred residential owners down Bloom Road. There is no other access from, or egress from Bloom Road except coming out of Bloom, Beaton Path, Colpease, Potter, Potter Note Courtyards. Most of these residences include at least two vehicles. If the existing two units per acre, that would be approximately a seven percent growth in that area. A hundred and eight units is a eighteen percent growth. The One Mooresville Comprehensive Plan, mentioned many times, lists most of the major areas in this, in the plan as needing improvement. Brawley School right now doesn't fall into the needing improvement, but if the plan continues to be set aside, it'll be there with the rest of them, and we don't have to look too far, over to One-Fifty Growing Congestion, Alkove, and the connector from I-77 to town. Please don't go against your plan. You approved it, you adopted it for good reasons. Consider that much of Beechtree, Bloom Road, and all of the lower Brawley Peninsula are within the ten-mile radius of the McGuire Nuclear Facility evacuation route. We do not need added evacuation bottlenecks. We urge you to deny the request for this rezoning at One-Twenty-Nine Bloom Road. Thank you.
Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, that's going to conclude the public comment portion of this public hearing. The applicant does have five minutes for rebuttal, and Commissioners, you obviously can ask as many questions as you'd like from the applicant or staff. Mr. Davis, just to, you do have five minutes, and I know Mr. Holmesley had said that he would like to speak on behalf of the applicant, so I just want to make sure you share that time.
I have an email saying I was on the waitlist, and I was hoping that there would be...
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I extended the public comment to forty-two minutes, it was only supposed to be thirty minutes, and I still got ten people in, I tried to accommodate everybody that we could.
Mayor, if I may, I have two comments, the first being that with the recent traffic addendum, that did include the project to the east of the site, so that was included with that analysis. Additionally, our attorney noted that if y'all wanted to consider a condition related to ADA, that you could include like the grab bars and no stairs, things of that, that nature. Anything to the interior of the building would be building inspections. So if you wanted to add that condition, we would suggest for condition number four, that it read "uses restricted to one story and no exterior stairs." That's something that we could enforce from the Planning Department. Thank you.
Any comments or questions for Ms. Martin? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Couple mentions that I think are important this time, but I need to revisit. When you contemplated the traffic impact analysis, it was for single-family. So that was basically one car, one vehicle per peak hour. But under age-restricted, this development, if approved, you would reduce the traffic by seventy percent. So instead of one to one, it is point-three-oh. So instead of one car per household per peak hour, the math is point-three-oh, if it's age-restricted. The other thing is, once this came in and was annexed into the town, it was, had a placeholder designation of R-two. It got caught in that ugly duckling, duckling phase between you were adapting your new One Mooresville Plan and getting rid of your prior land use plan. So it got annexed in without being able to present for the rezoning. They were asked politely to wait, and they did. So I think it's important to note that the part of the reason we're here this evening and we didn't go through the rezoning previously is we waited until your One Mooresville Plan came into effect. And if you, if I were to go back to the map, is when Erica mentioned, partially consistent. It does overlap your CN designation. So the road frontage there, that's part of that concentric circle, could be potentially up to eighteen units per acre. I'll also add on the traffic impact. You heard it said earlier this evening when the questions were raised of your traffic engineer. If the property was developed currently at forty-eight units per acre, there is no requirement for a traffic impact analysis. There would be zero traffic improvements at any intersection. This develop, excuse me, this development is not only meeting its current, for your traffic engineer and NC DOT, the required traffic improvements, we've added an additional two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred thousand in improvements by those two left lanes, the right-hand turn lane, and also the do, the signage and the do-not-block on the paving. The last thing I'd like to add that is not shown on the screen, but has come up several times, and I failed to mention it, so my apologies for not doing that the first time. At the intersection of Beechtree and the wall property, the developer, under their conceptual site plan shown before you this evening, there was a shaded yellow area in my slide presentation. Can we get back to that? Can we get back to that? The shaded yellow designation is basically the developer setting aside and preserving right-of-way, understanding that we are exceeding our present impact, but we are considering future development. So as you would know, anytime you improve NCDOT roads, the greatest cost to improve a road is the, the cost to acquire right-of-way. We are setting aside this right-of-way for any future development or roadway improvements and no charge to NCDOT, planning for the future. So a word that was mentioned previously that I'm a little hesitant to mention is the word roundabout. The applicant did everything they could to get NCTOT to agree to a roundabout. But the reservation of this right-of-way is very strategic and specific. Should future development occur, and NCDOT later decide that a roundabout would be appropriate, we reserve the right-of-way for that to occur. I would strongly, I ask politely again that you would look favorably upon this proposed development. It's pretty impressive to me that, the scene that we have some, a lot of fine folks speak in favor and in opposition. But the thing that probably impressed me the most was that you had an Olympic gold medalist standing before you who fortunately did speak. That's not, that's not what I'm talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. So commissioners, any comments or questions for the applicant? Any, yes, Commissioner Houston? Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions? So I'm going to go ahead and recognize Ms. Crawford, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify, I think based on staff's comment, the specific condition about there being no stairs. I believe Erica had mentioned for condition number four, it to read, instead of what I read previously, for the units will be restricted to one story and will contain no exterior stairs. Is the applicant agreeable to that condition?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And just for the board, you know, is the board agreeable to that condition in lieu of what I read earlier, based on Ms. Martin's comment about enforceability?
Anything else for the applicant? Anything, Commissioner Compton?
Back to Ms. Crawford. Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the ADA stuff inside the residence, that is the North Carolina Building Code pursuant to ADA standards. Is that not a condition because it's in the building code?
So that would be through the building inspections, so our department would not be able to enforce that condition.
So that would not be a condition listed on what we have?
Correct.
If it's built, North Carolina State Building Code regarding ADA standards?
You could require it as a condition. The question would be for town staff enforcing it, because it is something that the building code, you know, is building code-related.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Not only.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Qualls?
Along that same vein, you know, does Iredell County not enforce the rules that we set forth? I mean, what's the problem of why we can't get Iredell County to enforce if we require this to be ADA compliant?
Well, in speaking with the applicant in advance of the hearing, it was my understanding that they wouldn't want to condition ADA to the inside, so the things listed, the wider hallways, the grab bar, they had conditioned those things, but they don't want it to state that it would be 100% ADA because of all the measurements that go into that and just enforcing that in all the units.
Mayor, may I add to that?
Yeah, I want to, I mean, we're kind of, that's kind of, so we need some clarification. Mr. Falgood?
Sure. Mayor, just wanted to add, while we are currently not providing building permitting services, that go date is around September of next year, so it may be on a timeline where this project would fall under the, the town building permitting. And so I just throw that for your consideration. Yes, it will be more difficult to ensure that Iredell County enforces, but once the town takes over those services, obviously, it's a lot different. And I agree, I think if there are specific areas, obviously, any development's going to meet ADA standards in terms of what the building code says, that would think it'd be those additional items that Ms. Crawford listed off earlier. So for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Falgood. So, Mr. Davis, if you could clarify for the board?
We are proposing building these residents to R-3 ADA standards, so, which is type B. So with the local jurisdiction being able to enforce that, that's a condition that we would agree to.
Mayor, I would suggest maybe we go back, based on Mr. Falgood's comments about, you know, the town undertaking building code, you know, enforcement in the next year or so, that we go back to the original condition that we stated earlier, which read basically that the units would have no stairs into or within the home, there would be grab bars installed within all bathrooms, and circulation throughout the homes to accommodate wheelchairs and walkers, all pursuant to ADA standards. If the board's agreeable in light of Mr. Falgood's comments, I would suggest, then we suggest that condition.
Is that a condition, commissioners? Is that a, is that a condition, Mr. Davis, you could agree to?
Yes, sir. I was just speaking with Erica, and you might want to say R-3 ADA standards.
Okay, all pursuant to R-3 ADA standards?
Yes, ma'am. Type B.
Commissioner Qualls?
So past the ADA question, my next question is, a little clarification on this being 55 and older restricted. Can you kind of add some language to that, because that's very important to the public?
It is. Under zoning law, I don't recommend that we condition a zoning condition to age-restrict this community. I would suggest that those be private restrictive covenants that the applicant places on the property, rather than a zoning condition itself.
So how do we get this into the request?
The applicant has restrictive covenants that they put on the property, rather than a zoning condition which is tied to land use of it. Based on just research of North Carolina law, land use decisions are decisions about the use itself and not specific to an applicant or an actual owner of the property. And tying age-restricted communities, I think, you know, runs afoul of that. And really, they should be private restrictive covenants that the, the owner places on the property, rather than zoning conditions.
Okay, so we, you know, when an applicant comes forward, we have other age-restricted communities in this community, I mean, right across the street. I mean, their TIA was done, everything was done, their approval was based on it being an over 55 neighborhood, so why, I'm not understanding the difference of why we're not able to put some type of language in these, in this proposed approval that, that would confirm for the public if this was approved, that it would be over 55. Does that make sense? I mean, I, I'm confused why we're not able to put that in there, but yet we do projects that are specific to over 55, and that is restricted on that. We don't put the conditions, I'm not sure how we'll get through that.
Could, could we add a condition that planning staff would ensure that it's within the CCNRs, but all enforcement would be by the HOA?
I think that would, that would probably be better than restricting it to age. Eric, can you read, can you state that again, as far as what the recommended condition would be?
That the, the site would be age-restricted through the CCNRs to be enforced by the HOA. So staff would only bear the responsibility of seeing that that was then recorded within the CCRs?
I, I still think, you know, based on review of zoning law, when you're, when you start getting into who the owner will be of property, we can do it, I just recommend that we stay away from age-related conditions. That's all my questions.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, commissioners? Commissioner, Commissioner DeWes?
No, I'm sorry. Anybody else?
Chair's going to close the public hearing. Entertaining motion.
Mayor?
Commissioner Compton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the future character and land use map amendment by stating, making a recommendation to the town board to approve CZ 2022-19, even though it is inconsistent with the Town's One Mooresville Comprehensive Plan. Specifically, the proposal is denser than the two dwelling units per acre that the Peninsula residential land use category recommends. However, the request is reasonable and in the public interest, and it will provide for a different housing choice in that area, as well as provide a gradual transition from the commercial area to the more rural residential area. Therefore, as part of this action, the future land use map will be amended to reflect the neighborhood residential category. This approval includes the conditions as listed on page 11. And Ms. Crawford, do I need to state anything further than that?
Just the additional condition, unless there's others, that the units would have no stairs into and within the home, there'd be grab bars installed within all bathrooms, and circulation throughout the homes to accommodate wheelchairs and walkers, all pursuant to the R-3 ADA standards.
The nine conditions on page 11 include, but also adding no stairs on the interior, there'd be grab bars in the restroom, circulation throughout, pursuant to R-3 ADA standards. Conditions agreed upon the developer, it made binding through this action, Mayor.
Commissioner Compton's made the motions of second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Houston. Discussion. Commissioner Qualls?
Yeah, I think one of the conditions that was offered by the, the developer was the additional right-of-way for future road improvements, because that's very important in that area that this.
Ms. Martin, is that included in number seven?
On the concept plans, it would be included from that, but you could also add it?
This is in the additional-
Dedication of right-of-way along that, the corner of Beech Tree and Bloom Road.
Commissioner Compton, could you make that additional condition?
Yes, including adding the, the piece of property reserved for future transportation to corner of Beech Tree and Bloom Road.
Commissioner Houston?
Second.
Additional discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. Commissioners, the chair will call the meeting back to order. This time, I'll direct your attention to agenda item number 7B. This is a conditional rezoning request for 170 Colbreth Lane. This time, the chair will recognize Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. So the property is currently owned by Michael and Mabel Colbreth, Boyd Lake Properties, and Catherine Keiger Trust. The applicant is PDC Land Acquisition LLC. It's located at 170 Colbreth Lane. It's just under 18 acres. The site is in the ETJ, and they are seeking annexation concurrently this evening. Here's a couple photos of the site and its current conditions. So the current district is residential limited service, which allows residential and institutional uses. It would also allow up to two dwelling units per acre, which for this site would be 35 units. Adjacent to the site are higher-density develops, recently approved or already completed, Osprey, Sunset Cove, and Waterfront at Langtree. Notably, there is an existing low-density neighborhood in Iredell County, indicated by the white on your screen. The request is a conditional corridor mixed use, which would limit the uses to high-density residential and commercial. Be up to 17.8 dwelling units per acre for a total of 318 units. This is in the critical area of the watershed, so impervious would be limited to 50%. The project consists of five multifamily apartment buildings to the north, with 1,500 square feet of commercial, and two commercial buildings to the south. It is important to note that there are no timing conditions related to construction of the commercial uses. The buildings will have a max height of four stories. There are 36 potential uses for the property, most related to the commercial uses. There are 19 prohibited uses, which include removing some of the uses requested by the adjacent neighborhoods, neighborhoods such as gas stations. The project will build a side path along the north side of Alcove Road, and includes commitments to maintain all public street trees on the site. The proposed district does not require active open space, but the developers are committing to a minimum of one acre of active open space. The orange areas on the map represent the potential locations of the active open space, but there's no commitment from the developers to fully activate all the orange, all the orange areas shown as active. The green areas show buffering or tree save area. Accounting for these colored areas, plus landscaping islands, and other non-highlighted areas on the map, the project will be 50% pervious, not because of increased conditions related to preservation, but because of watershed restrictions limiting development of the The developers are willing to commit up to $40,000 for a public piece of art to be located at one of three potential locations starred on this map. However, in speaking with our Parks and Recreation Director, this amount would not fully fund public art. At the request of adjacent neighbors, the developers have agreed to a condition of a fence along Wade's Way. However, per town ordinances, it is important to note that this would not prevent a future through connection onto Wade's Way. The developers are also willing to complete any transportation mitigations that come out of the traffic impact analysis. As far as process, this project falls after the zoning ordinance in which the TIA was required at zoning, and before a recent text amendment reinstating this requirement. Therefore, a TIA is not required for this project at this time. However, scoping for the TIA began this summer, with the TIA completed this past Friday. The project is now in drafting of the mitigations measures agreement with town staff and the NCDOT. The town's transportation engineer is present this evening, should the town board have any questions. Overall, staff finds the site is compatible with the area, expands the zoning district, provides a logical development pattern, and can be reasonably serviced by the town. Additionally, the proposal is only partially, partially consistent with the town's One Mooresville Future Land Use Plan. The future land use map envisioned this area with the designations of Village Center and Employment Center, signifying this area should predominantly become an area with places for people to work, and with housing for this future workforce as a secondary use. Aside for the potential for the commercial buildings to be office, there is little in this proposal to support significant employment uses. Therefore, if approved, staff recommends an amendment to the future character and land use map as mixed use to reflect the residential and commercial nature of the To conclude, staff recommends approval of the project with the conditions presented this evening, and an amendment to the future land use map. The planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this project at their October meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Comments or questions, commissioners? Commissioner West?
No, thank you, Mayor. Ms. Martin, just, I want to make sure I understand where we're at with this. So a TIA is, has been done, or is in process?
It was completed on Friday.
Okay, and, so, but we don't have a signed MMA yet?
Correct.
Okay, do, okay, so we can't condition based on that?
You can only condition that whatever comes out of the MMA that they will complete.
And is that in here? I did not see that in here.
It is in the ordinance, it's the condition related to the TIA. Hold on one moment. Might have left it over there. It is condition number 11.
What page is that?
It reads, "Agree to complete all mitigations identified from the-"
Page 54. Page 54, thank you.
"-from the transportation impact analysis and outlined in the mitigations measures agreement to be completed during the site plan."
I'm sorry, Commissioner 59.
Do we know what they are?
Ms. Wickerly is here this evening. Could you refer to her?
I can make out the little arrows, but it's not really clear what I'm looking at here.
Yes, so I've, it's a little bit smaller on your screen probably. This was broken up into two phases. The northwest side of Alcove as phase one, that's in red, and that shows a 100-foot storage of turn lane into the access that is right-in only. And at the main access, it's 100-foot turn lane to turn right into the access off of Sunset, the realigned Sunset Cove. And then it will have 100-foot internal protected stem, which is coming out of the site. And it will also have 100-foot storage of left turn coming from Alcove, turning left into the realigned Sunset Cove lane. For phase two, which is across the street, it will also have 100-foot right turn lane into the site and 100-foot left turn lane into the site. And 100-foot of internal protected stem that's coming out of where the retail for phase two of their development would be. There's also assumptions that are made as part of the TIA, so any assumptions, those typically get, you know, looked at and determine if we need to add any additional conditions, if there was anything that was assumed to be built that later is not built, sometimes those are added. That's why making sure that, to communicate to you all that the mitigation measure agreement is, is in draft form and not, not 100% sure what the language would look like, but there might be some, a couple additional items just to make sure that what was assumed is actually in place, otherwise it would need to be analyzed further.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Commissioner Qualls?
So, Kimmy, before you leave, I understood correctly what we're seeing here on the screen. Kind of boils down to, you may get some turn lanes at the site itself, which is a little, of course, this gives it a nice little squirt-off turn that turns closer to that. All of the growth that we've had in projects down along Langtree, Alcove, that area, you know, we identified Langtree Road as, in my definition, a hot mess. That all of these TIA's mitigation measures that are flying around from 20-some years, there's still a lot of unfinished work. And can you bring them up to speed on where that? Whole plan is to try to bring this together, maybe get developers to help pay for it that didn't finish their TIA measures to make this better. If we're just adding more, you know, 300-some more units, maybe we're just adding, we just might as well put matching on fire there. Make sense?
Yes, Mayor Protem. We do have a design that we have, a concept plan that we completed for Langtree Road. It goes on the west side of 77, but all, at the intersection of Alcove, Mecklen, but also east towards where the future east-west connector will intersect. We have, we have mitigation measures agreements for those other developments that have, that have completed TIA's. But what we are working towards is, and we've submitted, together with our planning department, we've submitted to CRTPO for grant funding to hopefully move forward a 100% design for Langtree Road that, that, that sort of carries that concept plan further. But basically, it would widen Langtree Road and provide as much interim improvements that we can. We're a bit limited by the, the current bridge over 77 for how, how much we can widen through there. But we are working towards that. Right now, we, we do have just the signed mitigation measures agreements for those other developments.
And then the other end of Alcove Road, you know, for Fairview Flyover, you know, Williamson Road widening at that end. Any idea what, where those projects stand at this point? It's not only just the Langtree ends or traffic flow, but where those improvements are on the NCDOT list today.
Yeah, I can't remember the exact year for Fairview Flyover, I believe. There's 2025 for construction. Yeah, those dates have changed a couple times, and now it's in the draft step. But I think we've got a couple people saying construction 2025 for Fairview Flyover, so.
If there's no right-of-way access, then they're not even purchasing right-of-way at this point to even start.
They're negotiating with property.
I believe they're in that stage.
So we're still a number of years out if and if on the NCDOT. Right, that's my question.
Additional comments or questions? Commissioners? Commissioner Compton?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Martin, I think it was stated by you earlier in earlier meeting or something regarding the water and sewer access and the way that's, how that's going to work. Has that been satisfied to the Towns of Mooresville Utilities?
Yes, it has been satisfied by our utilities. They are connecting into Osprey, which would be our preference.
Thank you.
Commissioner Houston?
I guess my question is that roundabout. There's been questions about the roundabout up there, redoing it. Without a TIA, I really can't see what kind of improvement is going to be at that intersection. Is it going to be signalized, going to be roundabout? We, it's a lot unknown in the traffic pattern right there at that intersection.
Yes, sir. So the TIA for this site assumed that the existing roundabout would remain and added the, the site traffic to that. And it did not show a need to revise the existing roundabout as a part of this project. Our future Langtree Road widening plans for, for all the developments and future growth does show converting that intersection to a signalized restricted movement, movement intersection. The TIA for this site did not show the need to convert that at this time. So part of the recommendations for this TIA, it did not include any changes to the roundabout. Since the time from those previous TIA's and this TIA, one of the major changes just to the overall transportation in the area has been the high occupancy toll lanes on 77. So that could possibly be benefiting the roundabout and, you know, pass traffic counts. But these, these recommendations were based on traffic counts that were taken recently.
And with that improvement, where would that cost come from? I mean, this developer really is not putting any meat in the road improvement that I see by this drawing. There's, you know, a bunch of millions of dollars been put into that, into that corridor that now seem like people getting the benefits this free and not putting anything out because we don't see what they, what that they putting in to mitigate that traffic there. I mean, that's something I don't see where they putting anything, you know, set right turn, left turn. And it's going to be a big, major improvement at that intersection at one time. So who would be until taking that cost?
So the, this, this development did not show any need for improvements at the, at the intersection or along Langtree Road at any of the intersections there. But any previous developments that, that did have mitigations along Langtree. The hope is that once we do get a, a design funded, that, that potentially there could be some contribution there as a whole project from the developments that have outstanding mitigation measures there along Langtree to, to put in future construction for what comes out of the 100% design for the road. Otherwise, it would be, once they reach their threshold, the, the individual developments that have completed their mitigation measures, once they hit their threshold, then they, that would require them to put in the improvements separately, one at a time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dinger?
Just a, just a comment. Kind of TIA data, because I actually, I reached out to the app and actually requested the TIA data. But I, I believe we've kind of lost our way a little bit in what Langtree's future looks like, what, what possibly could come from CRTPO, what, you know, what a master TIA looks like down there and how we solve this problem. But I'm not exactly sure we're getting anywhere tonight with it. Kind of need a little bit of the pretty photos, you know, if that makes sense. But just, just a comment is, is I'm just getting a little bit confused on, you know, what else is out there far as road improvements? Is there anything else coming? And how did this, how's this actually play a part of it? I think this would have been a little bit nicer if we will have looked at this a little bit sooner than this public hearing tonight. Just like I said, thank you.
And just Commissioners, the applicant will have an opportunity to do their presentation, and you certainly have the, you know, it's up to you if you, you know, want to get more information after you hear things and want to continue the public hearing, you don't have to make a decision this evening. But any more questions for Ms. Martin? Any more questions for staff? And then I'll invite the applicant forward. No? Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I am Paul Pennell with Urban Design Partners, representing PDC Land Acquisitions for 170 Culberth Lane. I believe there's a presentation. Let's see, did I just press the button? There we go. All right. Again, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. Working with Studio Fusion and PDC Land Acquisitions here, as you can see, this is a photo of the, of the site today from Alcove Road. You all may be familiar with the roadway barrier guardrail that's along the road. That's the location of, of this particular photo. The site consists of seven total parcels, but it's two development areas bifurcated by Alcove Road. The larger on the north side, well, actually, I guess, plan north side is primarily the multifamily townhome and up to 1,500 square feet of retail uses. And then to the south side of Alcove Road, plan south, is 10,500 square feet of retail uses. Today, the site is zoned RLS, residential limited services, surrounded by commercial corridor mixed use. And the current land use here is single-family residential. Then also, we have a village center overlay, and then this is also an employment center overlay as well. You can see the site noted there. Design considerations as we've moved forward through this petition have been quite extensive. We've taken existing site conditions into consideration. The unified development ordinance, I'd like to thank Mooresville staff with working with us on this as, as this UDO has come to fruition. Access requirements, we've worked through quite extensively with town staff, engineering, and also NCDOT. The One Mooresville Comprehensive Plan, community input, we've been working quite extensively with the Wade's Way residents. They have been quite well-informed throughout this entire process since we started working with them about a year ago. The current zoning district, the village center node, following those development guidelines, existing environmental features onsite, traffic impacts, and NCDOT, we'll get into a little bit more details with, with that item in just a moment. Pedestrian safety, green space and open space, specifically noted as set aside space within the UDO and also amenity areas. We have gone through multiple iterations of this plan while working with the Wade's Way residents and also Mooresville staff, and wanted to share some of those design concepts as this plan has matured and developed over time. Here, the original concept was to be providing a single public road, internal into the site with a terminus at the end, preventing any sort of future vehicular connection to Wade's Way, and then also allowing Sunset Cove their connection as, as they had originally seen many months ago. This plan had developed into a, a future connection over to Wade's Way. And then eventually, we looked at actually proposing a potential extension of Wade's Way. And you may see that some of the residential neighbors along Wade's Way were actually requesting a gated entry along that future potential connection. With all of these design concepts that we were considering, we were following UDO guidelines in which future residential buildings would actually be fronting along a future public right-of-way. This design concept continued to develop. We started identifying impervious areas onsite, parking, trying to better understand tree save areas. At this point, we were still, the, the main design consideration here where you're going to see a change is actually that, that extension of the existing Wade's Way Road and the gated access for the Wade's Way residents. And a few months ago, this was actually the initial plan that we had submitted where we had agreed with the Wade's, Wade's Way residents to show a potential future connection to provide that right-of-way extension to the property line for a potential extension of Wade's Way. However, within this development, within the development conditions of this plan, we agreed that Wade's Way would not be extended. However, Mooresville staff can approve that future extension if needed, if development conditions arise where the, the extension of Wade's Way actually were to make sense one day. Going through a few more of these iterative site concepts. Most notably here, the big design change was along Public Road 1, which is that initial left and right turn off of Alcove Road. Was the enlargement of that residential building at that corner to make it a more substantial architectural feature as you're traveling down Alcove Road. And this brings us to the current rezoning site plan. The green that you're seeing on this site plan represents tree save areas, 15% tree save set aside area. The orange that you see is actually the active squares or plaza set aside areas. So those will be programmed to be active recreation or squares or plazas as defined by the UDO. It's approximately 1.2 acres. We're showing street trees along Public Road 1, Public Road 2, and also internal, connecting the two sites divided by Public Road 2 from the north and south to create a very nice pedestrian walkable feel. Those public roads are lined by active recreation and plaza spaces as previously noted. And then we wanted to show an illustration that just better defines and better illustrates really those, those spaces holistically, also including the, the Sunset Cove rezoning that was just recently approved a few months back. Wade's Way residents had requested that we provide an exhibit that better explains the relationship from the four-story multifamily buildings internal to the site, across Wade's Way, the existing trees, and that distance to the, the closest single-family home located along Wade's Way. That distance is approximately 176 feet. This is a reasonably scaled diagram. I, I say that, however, the car, I think, might be a little large in this, but it is approximately 170, 176 linear feet from the proposed multifamily building to the closest single-family home. A TIA was conducted for this site. This is actually the scoping map that was developed back in March of this year. We can go over some of these, some of these dates here in, in just a moment. But five total intersections were studied, including the I-77 ramps, the roundabout, and then also the access points along Alcove Road. Just to provide a little bit more clarity on the timeline and milestones of the TIA related to this project, the initial scoping meeting request was made back on March 30th. The scoping meeting was April 8th. Scoping memorandum and understanding was done back on 7/24 and signed on 8/31. Traffic counts were collected back on February 22nd at the ramps. Traffic counts along the roundabouts were captured on 5/18. And the development team and planning, excuse me, the development team, planning, and NCDOT staff had multiple coordination meetings on 4/12, 5/18, 6/21. And the initial TIA submitted was done on 10/24. Final NCDOT comments came back on November 21st. And all NCDOT comments were addressed on December 2nd. The MMA is currently being drafted as of 12/2. Studio Fusion is the architect on this project. They were so kind to produce some illustrative axiometric renderings of what the site would look like to help better demonstrate the pedestrian walkability and plaza components of this site. Also, this, of course, represents the, the maximum height of the residential buildings onsite as well, four stories. And then here's an additional slide that, that hopefully represents an illustrative of, of. And then here's an additional slide that hopefully represents an illustrative of the walkable nature of the community and those plaza spaces being proposed along the public roads. With that, I would like to open it up to any potential questions that you may have.
Any comments or questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Compton?
Thank you, Mayor. Just first, just a clarification on your last map. It says Langtree Apartments, Morrisville, North Carolina. This would be, this would be more-
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
You correct that, please?
Thank you.
We will let touch you on our, on our name-
I completely understand.
Because we're very proud of it, you know, right here.
Very fair.
Secondly, on the, I'm looking on, in our packet on page 57, the print is so fine, I'm sorry. It's a great picture and what you ran through. How many ways in and out of this development do you have? Not counting Wade's Way, because Wade's Way looks like you can't get there initially.
That's correct. Let me back up just a touch.
Yeah, back up and just point that out, please.
Is this a pointer? No, it's not.
I know you got one off Alcove Road.
That's correct. So there is a full access along Alcove Road, and then there is also a right-turn slip lane just before, if you were traveling, let's see, if you're traveling south on Alcove, before you reach that full movement access, just before that residential building located on the corner, there is a right-turn slip lane into the site as well.
That little narrow, narrow intersection.
That's correct. There's two access points.
Thank you, okay. You went through it so fast, I saw your main one off Alcove, but I didn't see the little sliver there. It was more focused on Wade's Way, because you said that could happen.
Could one day. That's right.
We hope so, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Commissioner Wells?
So, thank you for keeping this up here. So the residential side there, Alcove, how much of that is commercial designation?
The residential side, it consists of up to 318 residential units and up to 1,500 square feet of ground-floor non-residential uses, so commercial or office, 1,500 square feet.
1,500 square feet?
1,500 square feet, yes. And then on the opposite side, the two non-residential buildings are up to 10,500 square feet. And also, these uses within the phasing within the TIA, all of that was captured within the TIA as well. It's probably worth noting that, just so, just so we all understand that.
Is it taken reasonably as phased?
Well, we had to phase it for TIA purposes, so that's really the, the main reason why it was phased.
Did we require that, or you all chose to do that?
So Michael Wickline with Design Resource Group, who is our traffic consultant on this, might be able to speak about this in a little bit more detail.
Michael Wickline with Design Resource Group, also a resident of Morrisville. So it's not a requirement that the TIA is phased, but, but what happens is when you have certain developments in a mixed-use, you know, perspective, you need to understand what the impacts are of the residential compared to the commercial, because generally, you're tied to do improvements for your first building CO. And so, commercial generates more trips, and what has to happen in the early stages of a mixed-use development, you have to have the capital and the, and the financial means to put in the improvements. And so phasing it in the TIA allows for any improvements that are necessary for the residential to go in, to get those residential COs, and then any commercial COs would be tied to its own set of improvements if required by the TIA.
Commissioner West, Commissioner DeWes. Any additional questions? Ms. Crawford?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the record, I'm looking at the ordinance, the draft ordinance that's purported for the board to adopt. There's 14 conditions listed here. Are those the conditions that you're volunteering, voluntarily agreeing to tonight?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner DeWes?
So in looking at this project, it would appear that the bulk of the open space is over by the commercial area and not as much open space or non-impervious space over in the residential. Do you know about what the, those two tracks, how they measure out as far as acreage?
That's a good question. I don't have those numbers in front of me. It just so happens that the commercials parcel had a lot of opportunity for tree-save on it, so that's why I think that it looks that way. It was a nice, nice buffer between the highway and, and that vehicular use to buffer that with the existing trees that are there today. That's a great question. I just, I don't have those numbers just off, off the top of my head. I apologize.
Thank you. Commissioner Wells?
So how much of this project is market rate? How much of it is targeted for some more affordable rents?
This is 100% market rate.
Any other comments or questions? Here now, I'm going to take public comment and then invite you back up if there's any additional comments or questions.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. First, I have five people signed up to speak, and the first person, each having three minutes, is Paul Goldbeck.
Paul Goldbeck, 104 Crestwood Lane on the Langtree Peninsula. So, a couple of comments from the Commissioners resonated with me. We've lost our way with Langtree. Langtree's a hot mess. The thing that strikes me at every of the, every one of these meetings I come to is we look at every development piecemeal, one at a time, each doing their own mitigation, each doing their own transportation impact analyses, and yet all our comprehensive One Mooresville documents talk about the area as though it is being approached as one enormous development, where everything is going to be tied together. So we come and we hear presentations about pedestrian walkways, and we end up with 100 yards of sidewalk with a dead end at either end that there's nothing there. And we see landscaping, beautiful trees, those were nice pictures, but the trees we get when developments are put in are little scrub trees, the cheapest thing that a landscaper can put in. So, you know, I keep coming back to One Mooresville. We need an overlay in this area. We need to understand what is it all going to look like when it's done? There is a huge residential development now being discussed for the other end of Alcove. And prior to 2019, Alcove Road was determined to be a secondary road, and yet every time somebody wants a development, we get another traffic light, we get another left-turn lane or right-turn lane, and it's just one after the other. There's no sense of how does this all fit together? Yet the documents the city put together said, "That's exactly what we're doing. We're making it all fit together." The best examples I can do are the examples that Langtree, in my mind, doesn't measure up. Griffith Street and Davidson, Morrison Plantation here in Morrisville, those are big areas where they're not adding traffic lights, they're not adding left and right turn lanes every 100 yards, and there is a consistency of elevation and design and landscaping and pedestrian friendliness that we are not getting in Langtree. And what I would ask for is a pause on further development until the hoped-for TIA mitigation measures are established, until the hoped-for flyover is a sure thing, until we can look at all of this as a comprehensive development. And then when people come in and want to develop, which is great, they know what they have to align with in terms of all the other development that's come. And, you know, I would come back, I brought a couple of articles with me, and Mr. Mayor, there's a quote from you talking about another developer for a downtown project, and this is what I think we should aspire to. "They have set the bar. Embrace Mooresville's history, its sense of community, the downtown feel, the character, all those things, and what they are doing complements it, preserves that charm." Are we working with developers in Langtree to do the same thing? I hear about people on Wade's Way, good gosh, there's six-story apartment buildings on the one end, and now we're putting more in. So, that's my three thoughts.
Thank you, sir. Next is Liz Rader.
Mr. Mayor and Board of Commissioners, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. I am a landowner in the Teardrop area, which is the area south of the, of Alcove. I own the three-quarter acre lots in the green space that's going to be retained as Greenway or Green Space. I, I think that this development is thoughtful. The developer has been easy to work with, has been very communicative with the landowners, has done everything properly with regard to presenting plans to the planning board and going through all the, jumping through all the hoops that are necessary to do these kinds of developments. We have waited a very long time to sell our land and to have something like this in Morrisville that's not a high-rise hotel, that is not going to be something that we're going to look back on with regret. So I ask that you approve this plan, and I'm in support of it. Thank you.
James Ashburn?
I'm James Ashburn. I'm trustee of the Kiger property, and I, you all listened to plenty tonight. I'll just say, much as Ms. Rader did, we feel like this is a worthwhile development, and we urge your approval.
Mr. Beck?
Richard Beck, 356 Riverbird Circle. In reading UDO on pages 403, 404, under the heading, section 5.12, Affordable Housing Incentives, these parcels appear to fall under zoning definitions supporting affordable housing. However, the information provided by the planning department and the petitioner failed to mention or include any consideration of affordable housing units within the proposed project. The question is, why the omission when one considers the town's affordable housing incentives and goals? Commentary on pages three and four, what I read online of the town's presentation, discusses the proposal is consistent with the One Mooresville plan and is a mixed destination. The plan does not support the destination character area as a walkable and transit-oriented development within large nodes with direct access to I-77. That's a mouthful, I know. The proximity of this project to the Davidson College Lake Norman campus, the hotel's another recent commercial development, and the proximity of Lake Norman create more of a destination along this western side of the intersection of Langtree Road and I-77. The Davidson College Lake campus is restricted to use by the Davidson College community and not the general public. It is not open to the general public, and to imply so is misleading. If walkability is the objective, there are no pedestrian walkways designated or illustrated on the perimeter or interior of the lower parcel, the one to the left on the picture, nor is there any crosswalk noted connecting the two parcels across Alcove Road. Therefore, one must assume any pedestrian traffic across Alcove is at the peril of the pedestrian. Again, we talk about crosswalks, talk about crosswalks on Langtree. We're still waiting for those. Maybe sidewalks and crosswalks can be part of the TIA MMA report that took them out? I would hope so. Thank you.
Becky Fox?
Guess, guess what I'm going to talk about? Traffic. It seems to be the popular word tonight. So I, first of all, I just want to say thank you. I greatly appreciate all that you have listened to this evening, but I think that what you've heard is the message that's concerned of all citizens that live in the area is of traffic. There is no comprehensive plan. We already know that the Alcove Road and Langtree exits and exit 33 are locked by the lake, are locked by I-77, and therefore, a comprehensive plan needs to be put in place from traffic. While I agree that these, these pictures are beautiful, the green, the grass, all the trees are definitely what's needed, hopefully there'll be light restrictions, of course, to maintain our dark sky, but the important part is how do we ensure safety? And the way to do it is with a comprehensive traffic plan, which we have been continually asking for the board to push for and support, that it looks at the entire area. The other thing I would ask for you to please push upon the planning board to ensure that there's architectural and build design. This makes sure that we don't have periwinkle next to tan, next to magenta, next to neon, all within the same area. In downtown Morrisville, you'll carry a brick from a historic building to the next development to make sure that it's consistent. We need to have architectural designs put in place so that we can ensure that whatever the builder builds, it's gorgeous. This is your gateway. This is your jewel. When people come to the lake, this is the exit that they get off on. This is the way that they go to Davidson, that they go to downtown, that they go to the events, that they bring citizens, they bring visitors, and they bring their money to invest and build in our community. You have to make this the jewel, and you need to raise the bar and continually push and partner with everyone to continually raise the bar. Traffic, build design, architectural design, and make it the best darned place to live forever. Thank you.
Commissioners, that concludes our public comment portion of the public hearing, so I'm going to close that and allow the rebuttal for the applicant.
Just real quick, we definitely hear that this is certainly a gateway location for, for this area, which was the reasoning for the design change of the building located along Alcove Road at the corner of Public Road, proposed Public Road 1N. It's certainly a, a location where as you go along Alcove Road and you make that turn off of the curve, there's a real opportunity there to make something visually appealing. In addition to that, you know, in working with Mooresville staff and locating a, a public art location, that corner is one of the locations that, that we have as a potential spot for some art at that intersection, two potential locations, and then another one at the end of that building. Related to the comprehensive nature of the TIA that was done, and also the pedestrian, potential pedestrian crossing along Alcove Road, I'll let Michael Wickline with DRG speak on that for just a couple of minutes.
Yeah, I just want to point out that I have heard a comprehensive TIA and an overall plan, and while I understand that that's under the works, I also would like to point out that the TIA wasn't necessarily done in a vacuum and doesn't only look at just this site's traffic. There are four different off-site developments that have been approved and not yet constructed and not adding traffic to the network that were then added per their TIA's to the study intersections along with this development to, to look at the cumulative impact that all of that is having out here. In addition to that, there was a half percent growth rate that was compounded and added over, you know, the six to eight build-out years, depending on the phase. And so, it's done in a purpose and in a way to be conservative in nature, to look at how bad it is and to take into account these additional developments that are being approved. That way, you don't just say, "Oh, well, let's look at this development, let's take it across," and then not keep in mind anything else that's already been approved. Now, we can't take into account every piece of land, because you've got rezonings, you've got different zonings that come through, that will likely be taken into account in the comprehensive study that the town will do for the overall corridor. But from our standpoint and looking at this, and, and what we're required to do is, we're very simply required to look at an intersection without the development traffic, and with it, we measure the impact, and there's a delta that comes, and it needs to be within certain thresholds before traffic is, or traffic mitigation is required and move forward. And with this, within this site, you're, you're looking at, based on the statistics from trip generation, one to two cars per minute per direction, very minimal impact on the off-site intersections. I know we touched on it before, the roundabout's currently operating at a Level Service A, basically the best operation it can be, and that's even assuming 2026 with all of the off-site developments with the growth and background. In regards to pedestrian connectivity, we coordinated extensively with NC DOT for, you know, going on 10 to 11 months now at this point, even before the scoping meeting, to try to determine access, because we all understand that access is an important part of design of a site. And the way that this worked out is, we understand that the new UDO requires more than one access point. It was a, that's the reason why we worked through and came up with, with the, you know, creative solution to provide a right-in-only access that still provided an additional access point, provides connectivity to the future Sunset Cove project, and looked through it. And as part of that coordination, we looked at pedestrian crossing on Alcove. And the problem with that is, you're already limited onsite distance in both directions. It's not a very safe location, especially on a 45 mile an hour roadway at an unsignaled intersection, and based on the amount of traffic anticipated from these developments, it's not likely that a signal would be warranted. So the only way to have a safe pedestrian crossing would be a signalized crossing, and basically DOT said they're not going to allow a pedestrian crossing at this location in my initial discussions with them. But this does- But this does provide connectivity pedestrian-wise through the adjacent developments and the sidewalk connections down Alcove that could get you over to Langtree Road, but there's also the issue of not actually having a crossing there as well.
Commissioners, any other comments or questions for the applicant? Ms. Martin.
Just a couple of comments, just to make sure where there's no conditions regarding appearance within the list. And one of the public spoke about sidewalks. Sidewalks are looked at during site plan, and so, they're not all necessarily shown on this plan. And I'm not sure with the DOT if the town was part of the crosswalk discussion, so we would not have reviewed that at this time because we haven't, the site plan is when we would look at that portion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Crawford. Commissioner Dingler.
Erica, so, I understand this, we're, you know, this is kind of preliminary, but am I hearing correctly, far as a walkability from the complex to the commercial, there's really no good way of crossing that at this time? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, I'm saying that as staff, we haven't reviewed that aspect of it. We review sidewalks during site plan. So, this is concept, so that's why it was very important for them to show the greenway, but all the sidewalk connections, we haven't looked at that. We haven't met with the DOT together about a potential safe crossing.
Got you. And just, and I know Sunset Cove's not, you know, not a part of this, but is Sunset Cove, this entrance going back there, is that probably the way that it's going to actually come out?
So, I know they coordinated these plans together specifically to allow this through connection, the preferred connection with the DOT and the town.
Got you. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
I do have one for the applicant, if I may. Just, I've had some conversations and the question of, you move forward and you take action and build out the northern part of the development, all the residential and 1,500 square feet of the commercial downstairs, but then, then the southern area, the Teardrop with the 11, 10,500 commercial square feet, doesn't end up getting developed. Is there, and then, so far, if that doesn't happen, then it kind of circumvents the whole idea of what the board, the land use that the board's looking for, for employment center and that sort of thing. So, I guess what I'm asking is, and if it's, if the board even wants to consider it, a condition about the phasing of development in relation to the commercial, to the residential. Commissioner Qualls, Commissioner Dingler.
No, I think it's a valid question. I mean, this, I mean, does the commercial, I mean, what's the timeline on that? What's that look like? Is there a chance it won't be developed? I mean, I think that's valid.
Commissioner Qualls.
Yeah, I agree that, you know, we've got plenty of apartments. We've argued, I'm not sure what does value adds to the town of Mooresville to have 300 and some more apartments, and it looks like and it feels like the development on here is that we've just stuffed in the commercial on the other side. It's not truly a neighborhood. We're just going to plunk it down on, just off the interstate, verbal, yet just more apartments. It's not going to, it doesn't have a community feel, it doesn't have services onsite. The traffic guy just made a comment that it didn't feel like DOT was going to give a sidewalk or a crosswalk over to the commercial side. So, it's not, it doesn't have a community feel, you know, getting to the residents out there, you know, we've not made this a nice, you know, you go along Alcove and it's development, 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 and none of it works together. None of it looks like it's orderly development. It's just, so this is one more piece of a request that just gets plunked down there, and I don't know what the value add is on it. You know, it doesn't, we say it doesn't meet our One Mooresville plan, and it's just, it's a wonky piece of property. Probably if you took the Teardrop off and just developed the main piece there, you'd probably get a better project, but trying to add in this little teardrop makes it difficult. I mean, I don't know what that should be. I believe the state should have continued to buy all that and changed everything, but it just doesn't feel like orderly development to me in Alcove.
Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Compton.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment, I would hope you'd hook up to Wade's Way sooner than later. It just makes more sense to have traffic leaving, going into the development or leaving it much smoother from two different sides instead of two of them so close together on each side of a building. Just the connection to Wade's Way just make it much smoother. That's all. Thank you.
Commissioner West.
Thank you, Mayor. Commercial aside, 318 apartments, and this isn't like the previous conversation of 108 single-story ADA townhomes. This is high-density, 318 multi-story apartments, and we get hit with a lot of density. I get it, right? Expensive dirt drives high density. I get that. My concern is, this is 318 apartments, we have 2,497 apartments either approved or under construction or getting ready to be awarded COs. 297 already. This is 318 more. So, I look at it from a product perspective, and I look at what's the value that offsets this density? Is there value that offsets the density? 40,000 for art and commercial, it's just not getting it there for me. There's some assumptions, it sounds like the MMA is still, mitigation measure agreement is still a little fuzzy as to what could go in there, so I have nothing there that I can say, you know, this, this is worth it, like we did with the ADA stuff. You know, this, the expensive dirt drives high density. All at the same time, we're being held hostage by NC DOT because we have no idea what they're going to do or when they're going to do it. We have some vague plans of maybe what they'll do, but when? We don't know. The One Mooresville Plan, everybody says, "That is not cement," right? That is a, that is a guiding document for us as a board to use as we map out the vision for Mooresville. It can be amended. The challenge that I have is, I don't see anything, there are no affordable housing. I don't really see anything here that compels me to amend that One Mooresville Plan. So, that's, I guess that's kind of what I'm struggling with.
Would I second to respond?
Yeah, let me, let me recognize Ms. Crawford and then, because I know she has some questions for you as well, then you can elaborate.
I just wanted to maybe address the mayor's question about the timing of the commercial and what the applicant's position is on that.
Well, at this stage, it had been thought of as a second phase. This is the first time it's come up as needing to be concurrent with Phase 1. So, I would probably just request what you would want to see from us. We're willing to be flexible. We want, you know, we're very excited about this development. We hope to earn your approval on it. So, if you have a specific request, we'd love to entertain that. It's just the first time that this has come up since we started this in March of this year.
So, I think maybe the request would be, if you would be agreeable to constructing the commercial at, prior to or at the same time as the residential.
In the form of a, would that be in like a development condition or, I guess, if we, if we were to build the commercial, what, are you talking about just like the actual vanilla, the vanilla box of that, or would you want it open and operating? Because I, one thing I can't guarantee is that there will be demand for the space, because we already have a bunch of vacant retail to the south at Langtree Apartments. Brett's adding another 25,000 square feet of commercial next door. We have cross parcel access that we've worked on with him, so that we would get direct access to the beach club that we're working out. We have 1,500 square feet of commercial on our site that we've been working on in addition to non-residential space in all our buildings. So, we have really thought through this, and it's just the first time it's come up in terms of the timing of the retail. It's not something that we're opposed to, it's just, it's just not something that's come up yet. So, it really just, I don't know how that development condition reads, because I can't guarantee that there are going to be, you know, users of the space.
And I think they wanted to offer the condition of the fifth building at the time of CO that the commercial would be complete. So, I'll relay, Mr. Pittstead. So, at the time of the fifth, which would be the final multifamily building, at the time they're ready for CO, they could not get that building CO'd without the commercial components all being constructed.
Constructed but not?
Could you please speak into the microphone a little bit?
Sure.
Raise it up.
Are we talking about constructed but not occupied? Like, do we have to have CO for those?
I think the whole premise is, is that based on the land use and what this is intended to be, employment center, that these apartments would get built, the market would show that it doesn't support, you know, commercial and the teardrop doesn't ever get developed. So, you've essentially kind of circumvented our land use plan and the One Mooresville Plan. So, if it was all integrated residential, commercial as a mixed-use development, you know, that would meet the amount of commercial needed to be considered employment. I think that's one thing, but it's so, what I'm hearing, it's so disjointed, and the likelihood of this would even get built, I think, has some folks questioned. And if you can't commit to that, that's fine, because you can't read the market. I just, I think those are just questions that some of the Commissioners had, and, but I do, I do want to, you know, there's a lot of information out there, particularly as it pertains to the traffic impact analysis and access in and out. Certainly offer up to the board, if you want to continue the public hearing, give these guys a chance to address some of the concerns that they've heard from you and be more specific on some of those items. That certainly could be an option you have.
So, with that, the chair's going to close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make the motion that we deny the request for the conditional rezoning based on the, that's inconsistent with our One Mooresville comprehensive plan, specifically the proposal does not provide the primary uses associated with that character area. Again, to your point, it feels like it's circumventing our One Mooresville Plan to have commercial with that residential.
Commissioner Qualls has made the motions. Is her second?
Second, Mayor.
Second, Mike, Commissioner West, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to deny the request. We do have a annexation request.
They would like to withdraw the annexation request.
Okay, the applicant has withdrawn the annexation request. So, Commissioners, we'll move on to Agenda Item 7D. This is reviewing the public hearing schedule with Mr. Wilson.
Yes, sir. Good evening. This item is to schedule upcoming public hearings. As you can see, we have three different meetings we're looking at coming up, January 3rd, January 17th, and February 6th. As you've already amended your agenda earlier this evening, January 17th and the third item, the annexation for Inland Lane Lots has come off, and then we did add Pedal Mooresville or our Mooresville Bicycle Plan onto that agenda. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Of course, you're welcome to move these around as you see fit. We tried to spread these out to balance any items or the items that we expect large crowds on, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any comments or questions for Mr. Wilson? Anything you want to move around? Keep in mind the adjustments to the agenda that we made for the 17th. Any comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve the scheduled, approve the, well, I'll let someone read it, but is there a motion?
There's a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Can you read the motion, please?
Action approved. I think the motion to approve a certificate sufficiently adopted for the resolution called for self-defense on January 17th.
January, yeah.
January 3rd, and, read all that?
Yes, sir.
January 3rd, January 17th, and for verse 6, 2023, to consider voluntary annexation and rezon request, text amendment, plan development district, other plan and requests listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Houston. Is her second?
Second.
Second, Mike, Commissioner Dewey's, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, Commissioners, I think, I'm looking at this right, that is going to lead us into closed session. Bear with me. Commissioners, we'll be going into closed session to consult with attorney under GS 143-318-1183, discuss, oh, there it is, economic development under GS 143-318-1184, acquisition of property, GS 143-181185, personnel under GS 143-318-1186, and then also the adjustment that we made for closed session as well will be included on that. All those in favor to go into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now going to closed session. Chair will call the meeting back to order, recognize Commissioner Compton.
Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
That's it? Okay. Is her second? Second, Mike, Commissioner Dingler, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.